Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Town of Fishkill Planning Board for Thursday, July 14, 2022. I am Anthony Brozier, Vice Chair of the Town of Fishkill Planning Board. Chairman Jonathan Cantor will be joining us later in the agenda after the public hearings. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have several announcements I'd like to make before we get to the agenda as a whole. I have already mentioned that Jonathan Cantor will be joining us after the public hearings. I was going to appoint Vijay as a voting member during the hearings tonight, but he is not here at the moment and may not be joining us, so we'll skip that. If he joins, we'll add him as a voting member for the portions that John is not here and also for the Fishkill Support Center. Reminder, cell phones, please silence your cellphone or other electronic device while in the meeting room as a courtesy to others in attendance. Speak into the microphones, audience in the room can hear, also the people at home that are watching. Item four, due to the late completion of last several planning board meetings, any applications that would require the meeting to continue past 11:00 PM may be carried over to the next scheduled planning board meeting on Thursday, August 11, 2022. And the final item, under project reviews, item number seven in everybody's agenda, which is 415 to 453 U.S. Route 9 Site Development Plan and CHI Acquisitions LP, two lot subdivision will be removed from tonight's agenda. We received an email from the applicant's attorney, Richard O'Rourke, just a short while ago at 5:43 PM. It says, "We did not comply with this provision." He's referring to provision of the code 114-3. "We understand that the planning board will not review our application this evening. We respectfully request that the application be adjourned to the August 11 planning board agenda by which time the 30-day period shall have elapsed, thereby permitting the planning board to declare itself lead agency to coordinate seeker review, and the applicant will have received comments regarding its submission regarding traffic." Thank you. And that is from Richard L. O'Rourke. First item we have here on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Board to approve and adopt the April 14, 2022 Planning Board Meeting Minutes. Non-substantive corrections on the draft minutes were provided by the Chair to Debbie Colonna in the planning office. Do members have any additional comments or corrections on the draft minutes?
No.
With that said, would somebody like to make a motion to approve? We got Fred?
Second.
Second.
Jody?
Yes.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? I guess John Cantor would, he's not here right now, so the motion carries 6-0 for the approval of minutes. So the first item tonight, first of four, the public hearings, is the Fishkill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses Site Development Plan at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter is possible. Applicant seeks Site Development Plan approval for the construction of a 47,073 square-foot two-story office building, a 15,187 square-foot one-story accessory maintenance building, the reconstruction of an existing 14,527 square-foot warehouse for accessory storage and exercise use, and the addition of an accessory park and meditation areas along with all associated improvements, including, oh, it says 247 parking spaces, but I think that has since changed, and four loading spaces. The proposed project is for use by members of the religious order and religious volunteers. The parcels are in the PI Planned Industries zoning district, with one lot consisting of 52.2 acres at 5 Chelsea Industrial Park and the other consisting of 5.14 acres at 26 Chelsea Industrial Park. This is a continuation of the public hearing that was opened by the Board at the April 14, 2022 meeting and continued at the May 12 and June 9, 2022 Planning Board Meetings, so we do not need a vote to open the hearing, it is still open. This application is on the agenda again later tonight for project review, where we will discuss the project in greater detail, including some of the topics brought up during the hearing that are part of the purview of this Board. There are a few things that I do want to mention here. Site visit took place on July 9. That visit was attended by the planning board members and the applicant's representatives. And I would also ask the applicant if they could provide a brief summary of items that have occurred or key changes that have been made to the plan since our last meeting in June. There have been some substantive changes to the plans and also to some of the hours of operation, and I think it's important for the applicant to describe those now instead of waiting for the project review later tonight, so Mr. Hire, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Brozier, members of the Board. Joel Hire representing Fishkill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses. As you mentioned, since the last meeting, and we've had some significant adjustments to the site plan, the proposed project, in order to address the comments that have been raised by our neighbors, to show that we're listening to those comments. Specifically, key changes, as is seen on the, on the plan, on the monitor. We have combined the softball and soccer fields into one field, one multipurpose field, and moved it to the far southwest corner of the property, so that the home plate, southern goal area are now a third of a mile away from any of the neighboring residential areas, buildings, and the northern goal is just over a quarter of a mile away from the residential buildings now. With that location, because of where it's at, the grading that's going to take place, it's grading plus the surrounding grading, the building height and the proposed construction of an earthen berm on the, right about the middle of what you're seeing there, next to the buildings and the basketball courts, that will effectively provide a 30-foot visual and sound barrier between these sports areas, recreation fields, and any neighboring residences. We've also, as you mentioned, shown on our plans how the land making of spaces, so that we've reduced to 148 spaces. We've also added some evergreen buffers in some key areas based on some comments from the neighbors. And then, of course, we've provided written responses to comments that have been received as of the submission date for this meeting, in order to show our commitment to not only what's on the site plan, but also some of the other issues. For example, as you mentioned, the hours of operation for the softball, soccer, basketball, volleyball, tennis will not start earlier than 10:00 AM in the morning. That will be the opening time. And again, that's in response to what our neighbors have asked of us. So those are, those are the basic, biggest changes that have taken place, and I think it goes without saying that as the applicant, we're interested in seeing this move forward, which is why we've made these significant changes to the plan. We've done it so that we can show our neighbors that we have heard their comments during this extended comment period, and we've done it to show our desire to be good neighbors in the community. And so we hope that these adjustments will be satisfactory and that we'll be able to continue the process in moving this project forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to read the rules of conduct for public hearings. I'll read them once tonight, not going to read them four times. Speakers are asked to come to the podium and identify themselves so that their name may be entered into the record. Speakers are limited to one turn at the microphone. Speakers are limited to no more than four minutes. There will be a warning when one minute is left. Speakers should provide only new or different information or commentary. Repetitive comments made previously or at prior meetings are prohibited. Speakers are encouraged to submit their comments in writing so that they can summarize their comments during the hearing. Comments are limited to matters involving the business before the Board. Verbal interruptions, shouting, or other outbursts, as well as slanderous or other obscene language or making signs with the body or face are prohibited. No speaker shall make any personal attacks on anyone. If a person continues to interrupt after the Chair has asked them to stop, they will be asked to leave and escorted from the meeting room if necessary. At this point, I am going to turn over to Mr. Cordisco to provide a little bit, a little bit additional information about our public hearings.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Brozier. In addition to the rules of order of public hearing, I thought it might be helpful to talk about the purpose of the public hearing. And I'm quoting a short section, if I may, from the New York State publication called "A Guidebook for Local Officials." And it says that "A public hearing is held for the purpose of receiving public comment on a particular matter. Comments and questions should include facts relevant to the application in front of the Board, and all comments should be directed to the Board. The Board may ask an applicant for a response to a question from the public if the Board so chooses. Further, the Board is under no obligation to answer questions, but it may choose to respond if appropriate. The public may also, of course, submit written comments. Respectful conduct is expected. All persons are entitled to express their opinion about the proposal. However, a public hearing is not a debate between the public, the applicant, and the Board. Again, the purpose of the public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the public to express their opinion to the Board about the proposal. All public comment becomes part of the official record and will be taken into consideration by the Board during its review and decision-making."
Thank you. Thank you. We did receive several comments via email and mail since the previous planning board meeting. I'm not going to read each of them verbatim, but I can assure the public that all emails are provided, that are provided, and all letters are part of the project record and have been received by the Board, our consultants, and the applicant. The key items pertaining to the purview of this planning board either have been or will be discussed with the applicant in detail, and I'll briefly just mention these emails and letters that we've received, including some of the key topics that were brought up. On Monday, June 13, we received an email from Faisal Beg. The items brought up included noise and traffic. On Monday, June 13, we received an email from Hina Hafiz. The items brought up included safety, auto accidents, and noise. On Monday, June 13, we received an email from James Heim. None of the items described in that email are under the purview of this Board. On Wednesday, June 15, we received an email from Roy Lane. Items brought up included external visitors to the site. In addition to other items that are not under the purview of this Board, we received several emails from Kenny Gadston. Items brought up included noise studies, concerns about traffic study, start times for activities, and a question about the previous field location and soil cap. One comment was raised about meeting minutes. The meeting minutes are posted on the Town of Fishkill website after the minutes are approved by our Board. Until the minutes are approved, the public can view previous meetings, videos of our meetings online. Several other requests were made in the message, such as requesting the ability to show photos or videos during the meeting. I believe this came up at our last meeting, Mr. Cordisco, and we briefly spoke about that, how that would not be something that could be done, but photos could be submitted to our Board via email, and links to videos can be provided to our Board via email, but we are not obligated to...
Correct.
...post them or show them here.
Correct.
On Thursday, June 23, we received a letter from Robert M. Shaw from Galena, Kansas. The comments provided to this Board are not within the purview of this planning Board. And on July 13, we received an email from Patricia Augusta, and the items brought up in the message included noise, traffic, the removal of trees, disruption of nature, animals, and excessive use of water in the area. At this time, I am going to, by a show of hands, ask the audience to raise your hands if you wish to speak, and I will ask you to provide your name and address for the record when you come up to the podium. I'll start from the, I'll start from the front.
Mary Ellen, 4703 Ridgecrest Drive.
Is the audio on the microphone?
It's a little low in the room.
Hello?
Just a moment.
Unfortunately, that's as loud as it goes.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, hold on. Yes, I just wanted to say, thank you to our neighbors for listening to our concerns, but we did mention that the time would start at 10:00 AM. There was no mention of when it will stop in the evening. One of our concerns is that it will go into the night and that there will be lighting all over the place. We're asking that there's no permanent lighting or temporary lighting brought in, and basically everything else that you know I've sent you emails about, so thank you.
Show of hands again? Yes, you, sir, in the yellow shirt.
My name is Donald Stripler. I live in Holly Ridge, right next to the site. My comments tonight are strictly about the application that was brought in on 6/29/2022. First of all, my comments has to do with the lighting. They plan on putting 20-foot-high poles up for the height of the light on, with down-faced, flat-faced fixtures, but the bottom line is the higher you go, the more the light spreads. If they were to bring that lighting down another five to seven feet, there wouldn't be any problem with off-site light splash. There's problems with, need to be addressed with discrepancies between what they say the lumens are on the fixture cut drawings versus what they put in the table. One says 3,000 lumens, the other one says 15,000, and another one says 11,000. So that needs to be addressed. Okay, the proposed landscaping, well, the proposed landscaping, I would be the one that would be most affected. Though it is a beginning, it is not a beginning and end-all. This should be a built-up berm, and the planting should be higher. They're proposing six-to-seven-foot plants. That plant wouldn't cover the, the lighting issue. They're much too short, and my life is much too short from this point going forward, so it would take decades before those trees would cover. Now, eastern white pine are fast growers. Norway spruce is a very slow grower, and if they increased that, that wall of greenery at least another 50% more than what they have, possibly build it up on a berm, that's sufficient that the plants will continue, continue to be healthy, that would be a great start for that issue. The project build-out, okay, they, I see phasing put on, on here about how they want to build it out. I have a proposal here for the Board for a build-out that addresses the neighbors' needs. The neighbors don't want to listen to the ballgames, so the situation is that until the building walls are up, not just the structure, the skeleton, but the building walls are up, the ballfields should not be allowed to be used, because that's the purpose of the moving the field, was to use them as a berm. Well, that should be put in a phase where the walls are up. Not the interior being finished, but the walls being up. That would address the noise from the beginning. The hours of operation, well, you have hours of daily operation for the entire facility. None of that has been given, or how long the lighting at night would be on? Would it be all the lights or would just be some of them? The wall packs that they have are downlighting, which is a good place to be, but one of the things they didn't do, they didn't address the existing building that's at the southeast entry to the property. It's like a ghost on the print, and they're presently completely renovating that building. It shows absolutely no purpose on the drawings. What is the purpose for that building? And those are the lights from that building that are the greatest, have been the greatest problem for myself. They turn them, so they push more light into the field. I have people within the Jehovah Organization I know, they go out and they fix it, but the bottom line is that it is something that needs to, to be addressed, that building. All right? The other thing has to do with the pavilions. The pavilions on the drawings show them proposed to be a certain size, not the exact size. Then on another drawing, they show them to go look at the first drawing, but it's not a lock-in. It doesn't tell you what it's going to be used for. They say that they'll let you know when they go to pull a building permit. Well, the Board's job is to review the whole site and not just those parts of the site that are new. It's how it integrates with the existing parts of the site, so that building should be taken into account as well. All right. Now, the other thing that isn't addressed is the storage building and the maintenance building. Will they be, what kind of work will they be doing in them? Will there be trucks, buses being worked on in there? As you all, as you all know, that federal government has mandated beepers on the back of trucks.
I'll give you another 30 seconds, but we are, we are past time.
They require beepers on the back of trucks. Those beepers, every time they back out of this maintenance facility, whether it has a loading dock or you go inside, those beepers are louder than any, probably any other noise on the property, and they're that way because the federal government mandated it. But I'm a neighbor, and I don't necessarily like that fact. All right? And the miscellaneous is, have you, has the Board given a secret declaration to this project? And if you haven't, there are things that, it's your toolbox. It's what you need, have, given to you by the state to work with. Without a secret declaration and a positive secret declaration, you've taken your toolbox and you slammed it shut, and that's it. I, I have minutes.
I would encourage you to please, yes, distribute those.
There you go. Everything I've said and more is in here. Thank you. Then one for everybody, the Town Engineer, Attorney, and the Secretary.
Yeah. Yes. Thank you. Show of hands, anybody else? Yes.
Since I believe this was a done deal before the public comment phase, we can only hope that they are, there are some concessions made to the project before it gets your final stamp of approval. As a resident who travels this area as well as sails on the river, I request the Town of Fishkill make them scale back this project so it does not impact the neighboring communities and move it from, further away from the property line and reduce the lights. Build the wall that they're requesting. My other hope is that they visually blend in these outbuildings with natural, in the natural environment, with building material colorways in darker colors and not look like massive white or beige boxes visible from the future Empire Rail Trail nor from the river and the railway lines. I have faith that this applicant does show good neighbor relations at this site, and they have at other communities. They have a willingness to work to satisfy the town residents. Let's hope they follow through on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Show of hands? Yes, you, you in the back. Is this audio coming through? It doesn't feel like it's coming. Is it? Okay. Yes, okay.
Hi, my name is Ahinda Hafiz, and I'm a resident of Holly Ridge. My address is 4111 Ridgecrest Drive. Okay, so my comments specifically are for the June 29 submission and overall project as well. I have the very same concerns, and John just stated. I do see the plan, but I don't see the phases of it. Which portion would be constructed first, which would be later, because my house is very close to the field, so I would be severely impacted if I can see the lights, if I can hear the sound, and so on and so forth. So please, I request if it can be, it can be documented and accordingly approved. Okay, the next, which I have, my concern is, it says the timings are from 10 to dusk. Dusk is not a specific time, and these days, the sunset is 8:30 or so, so what is dusk? Like 9:00 or so or 8:45? That is way too late. Kids go to bed by 8:00, so it would impact severely our day-to-day operations and our life as well. The next is, this section on second page, it says, the very last bullet, daylight sensors and automatic controls between the hours of 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So if I consider winter timeframe, so everything would be lit till 10:00 PM. That is way too late. Sunset happens like at 5:00, so all these 37 lights or so, which would be on the field, they would be lit till five hours after sunset, so this really needs to be addressed. This is way too late, and I'm pretty sure our neighbors are in, like they are for energy conservation, so they can think of like when it's post-sunset, they can talk about sensory lights or so. Motion, like, I am for security, but it should, it's not impact our life, because right now, I think the current building has like three bulbs or four. I can count them literally. So imagine when we would have 37. Okay, and I guess that's it. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to share our concerns.
Thank you. Show of hands, anybody else who wishes to speak? You got some, yeah. I can't see. I guess I'm not that tall.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for, what, the June 29 revision?
Sorry, the microphone.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for, the applicant for listening to some of our concerns. We appreciate that. I too am concerned about when these, when the buildings are happening, when the time of the play is going to happen, if they could address that the playing on the fields would not happen until the buildings are actually built, so we don't hear it. I know that's a repetition. I did note, notice in the plans that there, they talked about reducing the parking, but that the other parking is still there, I guess for future, just in case they want to, it's banked parking, so the parking is still on the plan, but there's also parking called grass pavers that are throughout the complex as well. I'm curious to know if those are counted in the amount of parking. Also, there's not only pavilion, there's pavilions throughout the complex. Some of the pavilions are actually close to the border of the different complexes, and my concern is also the sound coming from the pavilions, like how much noise will be emanating from them? Is there going to be large groups of people cheering again and chanting again? Not chanting, I don't care about chanting, but cheering? And just, we talked before about amplified noise and amplified, no amplified use of microphones and stuff like that, if that was also going to be the case for the pavilions? And I think that was, that's a major concern about the noise once again in our backyard. Also, I think that they're going to be building walking trails on the site that was formerly going to be the baseball field and soccer field. Is there going to be, is it going to be not flat so that people that want to go maybe practice soccer aren't going to be on the fields practicing and making noise once again? So that's another concern. Also, the applicant had mentioned that definitely one time a year, there's going to be visitors coming to the, the site, but no, but possibly five to six was mentioned throughout the course of the year. We just want to make sure that that's supposed, that site may be perhaps where the soccer field is, where the proposed soccer field was. Is that going to be the land where they're going to be amassing all these people and having their, their, their good times? Anyway, thank you so much, and thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name is Pat Biscari. I too am very concerned about the noise. My property is butted up right against the back. I'm probably one of the closest people to where this is supposedly proposed. I'm very concerned that last year, when they started, well, they started like two years ago, but when they had their games, it was extremely loud, and it was only a few people. I'm very concerned, are they bringing in how many in a bus? You say that there's a parking lot, but is there also going to be a bus? You say that there's a parking lot, but is there also going to be a bus that comes in? They're extremely loud with cheering, and sometimes it starts at 6:30 in the morning. They had practice before they had whatever they were doing. They use muddled bats. They're very loud. And when you're in my home, it sounds like I have a crowd of people playing games in my home. That's how bad it is, with the windows closed. I like my windows open, but when it happens, I have to close my windows. In the past, when they had all the lights on, on the first building, that blasts right into my bedroom. The bedroom is butter up against the back. Again, the, I'm so concerned because with a couple of people playing, you'd think you were at a Yankee game. So when they have a lot of people, I'm shocked, I didn't know they're going to do basketball and tennis and the soccer I knew with the ballgame. But this is really very disappointing that we live, we lived here 20 years ago to have peace, quiet in the woods, and it's very disturbing that this is going to happen in our backyard. They do have a party or some kind of maybe two times a year in the past. I don't know how many people, but if they are going to expand, it's extremely loud. They blast music that is, the decimal is, I don't know, off the charts. So again, they're building this up to what is a small, tiny little thing that's going on now to something that's going to be expandable, that once you agree to this, the expanding will, who knows how long, how much it will go. So I'm very disappointed that this is taking place. Thank you.
Thank you. Show of hands, anybody else who wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Nizville Smith. I'm a new resident to this area. I moved here last year with my wife and my two children, my three children. And last time I said it to you guys, the impact study was done, but you guys really focused on 2016 to 2019 because due to COVID. But a lot of people moved up here from the city, and traffic changed since then. My car accident wouldn't be included in that on Brockway and 9D. So I'm just seeing if you guys are still doing your impact study from your guys' perspective, where are we at with that? We'd like that to be done. Also, you know, if they're going to have fields and entertaining a lot of people out there, that's more traffic on Brockway, more upkeep. How is that going to impact us and safety and concerns? So that's what we're looking at, you know? See if you guys can help us with that. Thank you.
I will briefly answer that. The traffic study was submitted. It was reviewed by our consultant, and that memo is in our review. It will be discussed during the project review. I don't want to get into a, I'm not.
Was that the one for the police from Fishkill that you're talking about, or?
It's part of the project review.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know that it has been reviewed. We have received it. We will go through the comments received by our consultant, who has reviewed it. Show of hands, of anybody else who wished to speak?
Hi, good evening. I'm Kelly Antonucci, town of Fishkill. So, put it what? Speak louder, okay. So I wanted to understand if the DEC has been out to this site, and are they aware of this project? Has the planning board contacted the DEC? Because from the site plans, the toxic area runs right along the edges of the buildings, and I would like to know, what assurances do we have that it will be safe when they demo these buildings and disturb the soil that is toxic waste? Are the Jehovah Witnesses certified in working on contaminated sites? Or are they bringing in a certified specialist? Because this is going to create dust that we are all going to be breathing. I also have some concerns with the meditation center. So although much of the fields were moved, this was left right along our border, and I wanted to know if there's going to be light at this meditation center? Are they running electricity? Are they going to have barbecue pits? And will this meditation be organized or at-will meditation? Will there be chanting that is going on? And I do care about chanting. And then lastly, why would a meditation center need a pavilion? Usually, if you're meditating, you don't really need a pavilion. Then we are left with the large field. So they moved the proposed site of the soccer field and the basketball field, but now that leaves us with a very large, open field. And I'm just curious, what is the purpose for this? Because I don't see a designated purpose. So I'd really like to know, what will this field be used for? They could easily start playing soccer, kickball, sports, different classes that are going to be on this field. And will there be large gatherings on this field? And how will we be ensured that they will be applying for permits and that there is a limited number of these large groups? It just seems like a perfect area to go ahead and have a festival. We also still have concerns about the noise from this site in our very quiet and peaceful community, and we would still like an acoustic study done and a second opinion on whether or not they can build a wall. I'm curious as to who said that the wall cannot be built other than the Jehovah Witness community. The attorney here had suggested that they could build their development first, and then we could do a study, but we don't find that to be acceptable. We want this study done, and then they can build it, because we don't want to live for a year with all of this noise. And we would also like trees that grow at a faster rate and that have a proven ability to block sounds. And they state on their plan that, how far this is from the edge of our property, but sound travels, right? So you can still hear this sound regardless of if they've moved it a few hundred feet. I'd also like to know about industrial drive. Is that a town road? And if so, who is paying for their essentially exclusive use of industrial drive? Because nobody else is going to be driving there. And I also had some concerns about the traffic study that I started to talk about last time I was here. They had the cameras up only for one day. They placed the strip measuring the traffic west of Holly Ridge Streamside and the Vista communities, so it would only track traffic that is going to Rivercrest and Overlook Point while not counting the majority of traffic from the three large communities. And I would ask that the study include the impact of the 250 cars leaving from their community, Rivercrest, to travel on Brockway to get to their office building at 8:00 or 9:00 a.m.? Because that's where they indicated that all of the people would be coming from is from Rivercrest. And I would ask that they install a direct route from their property directly to this other site, so that they don't have to put all these cars onto Brockway. Their traffic study did not include any data from 2019 to 2022, so all of their data is four years old. They didn't get permission from the town before starting it. And lastly, I found it really telling that the slogan of Colliers Engineering printed on the report says, "Customer loyalty through customer satisfaction." So clearly, their goal is to have a loyal customer by ensuring that the customer is satisfied, not that the truth or an accurate study was performed. Watchtower paid for the report, so they must ensure that Watchtower is pleased with the findings.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Show of hands, anybody else who wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is Kami Gazin, resident of Holly Ridge. So I just want to start by saying that the applicant has done, taken some steps to actually try to address our concerns. What is very concerning to me is that myself and many of my neighbors have spent hours upon hours in between cooking dinner, maintaining our families, and working full-time jobs to actually try to comb through all of this information. A lot of this stuff that the applicant is bringing to you now should have been brought to you before. The changes that they are making are changes that pretty much equate to them following the law in a lot of places, or the attempt, like the parking. We asked for them to go down to 123, and they're going to go down to 146, but then they're going to come back to you later, as I stated, to increase the parking again for people that live next door that can pretty much walk to the place of employment, if that was the case. So I do not want us to be fooled here. I also want to say to all of you that we appreciate and we value the fact that you've taken the time out to actually hear us and listen to us. And if you continue to hear us and listen to us, then you will know that this project should not move forward at this state. There's too many things that are still left unopened. And I'll give you, they want to build, as what my neighbor said, that the attorney suggested that they build and then do the sound study. Well, he doesn't live there, and so that's not a good idea. And as I stated in my email, you know, when we solicit the help of the attorney, this should be for legal advice, not what we personally think, and that's my opinion. We reached out to the DEC, and basically, he gave me two figures that I will give to the board, but what he said to me was quite alarming. He said that pretty much the containment area that is the existing cap and the environment easel area work cannot be performed within the cap area without permission. So when this original application was given to you, it was given to you with the attempt to move forward as is. At that time, the applicant had no application in to the DEC to do work. So once again, we would have been befocled here if we would have moved forward with something that did not already have approval. So this is not being a nice neighbor. What this is being is caught your hand in the cookie jar, and now we're saying you have to take it out, and you can't have the cookie. And so they've been accommodating enough to listen to us and do the things that they know they have not done, because they were hoping that you guys would just push this project through. The other question I have for you is, why would they need another basketball court? This is a duplication of activities that they already have on their existing property. So once again, even though they're sitting before you, telling you that they are not going to invite other people in historically, and you can try any other community, this is what is done. They bust them in, they have a good time, and they leave. And so therefore, we are asking you to please not do that on the backs of the people that live in my community. It is not what they think. It is not just Holly Ridge. There are other adjacent home communities that they don't want this. And so I am proud of all of my neighbors that have stood up to address these issues. I also want to address the traffic study. So I took the time, and right before I got here, what I had before me is the accidents that are only recorded by the Fishkill PD. And so I was not able, this would be lacking the state, if they dealt with it, state police, and it would be lacking the county police. And so the blotter found matching criteria entered, and I asked them for any accidents that have happened on Brockway from 2003 to now. So 27 of them have happened between 2003 and then you have up until 2017. That's police blotter information. In addition to that, I have actual police reports that I just received today from my foyer. So once again, you have inaccurate information, you have a one-way-in, one-way-out situation that has extensive risk for car accidents, and therefore, nothing is going to be done. So what I am suggesting, if you guys could please hear what we're saying, is to hold this application, and they should go back to the drawing board. They should actually meet with the people who are dissecting what they are presenting to you as whole, so that this way, there's a clean pathway to seeing the point from the people's view.
Time.
Thank you.
I let you go a little long to finish. Show of hands, of anybody else who wished to speak at tonight's public hearing?
My name is Mel, town of Fishkill. Jehovah's Witnesses are the big fish in town, and they hold all the cards. In fact, I would imagine they have more respect from you guys than we do as the small fish, and that's the hard facts, right? So they have a lot of variables that could change over the years, so we simply need a wall. Because if they decide two months, three months from now to move the soccer field, do this, do that, put the building somewhere else, we don't suffer. I'm right on the line, so I hear all the cheers. Run, Forrest, run, you're so great, all that nonsense, I hear that, right? You guys don't hear it, I hear it. So since they have all the variables, right, and they hold all the power, put up a wall and let them do what they want to do, okay? The second point is, the gentleman at the beginning mentioned that sports start at 10:00. But what about the cranes when they start building over the next two or three years? I have to hear every hammer, right? Can you imagine that, listening to all the hammers and every time they move and drop something? We have to hear that. In conclusion, I want to say this. Jehovah's Witnesses teach as a part of their theology that you city councilmen and government officials are a part of the devil's world. You are part of the Satan system of things. That's in their literature. You can see it on their website.
Please, sir, I understand.
No, 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 you got to, you got to hear. One last sentence.
I understand.
It deals with what I'm talking about, okay?
Please make your point.
Okay, so, yeah, thank you. So they teach as a part of their theology that anyone that's not a Jehovah Witness is going to die at Armageddon, be burned to smither rings, right? So when you think that for the future, what do you think about these people now? We are those people. So do you think they're going to be mindful of the sounds that we have to hear when they think we have a bleak future? I want you to think about that. Thank you.
Show of hands, of anybody else who wishes to comment?
Good evening. My name is Benon Castan, live in Holly Ridge as well. So we know that we have 100 townhomes being built now. That means more traffic. So what I'm asking, can you please keep this hearing open? You don't, you don't have all the facts. Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to speak? If there are no more members of the public wishing to speak, I'd like to discuss with our consultants and the board whether the public hearing should be closed at this time. And I'll start with our consultants, as to their thoughts, as to would there be any reason, any other additional information at this point that would warrant the hearing being kept open at this time?
Mr. Broger, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, that the purpose of a public hearing is to receive public comment from the public regarding their opinions and their concerns regarding the project. This is the fourth night, over the fourth month of public hearing for this project. There certainly is a significant level of concerns, many of which have been addressed by the applicant, but all of the concerns have to be addressed by the board. And so at this time, my recommendation would be to close the public hearing so that the board could continue on with its review, including a review of the concerns that have been raised by the public today.
I'm going to jump in first before I go down the line. My suggestion would be to close the hearing, but to allow a period of additional written comments until next Friday, July 22, 2022. There were some items brought up tonight. We did receive a few items from the public that were hand-delivered to us, and I suspect there may also be some additional information submitted to us in the next few days. And that would be my suggestion at this point. And I'll go down, I'll start with Felix.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think, you know, we've heard a lot of great things from the public. Kelly, real quick, can you submit to us what you wrote today, what you said today, please? Thank you. But I think a lot of the topics that have been brought up over the last four months are, you know, they're basically the same idea, same concerns, and the applicant has work to do, I feel, to address the concerns. But I think at this point, we've heard a lot from the public. I think we've heard pretty much most, if not everything, that they're concerned about. I think the newest thing that, you know, the DEC thing you talked about, Kelly, I think is something, you always seem to... think is something, you always seem to bring something new to the board, which I appreciate. And I think, you know, leaving it open until next Friday, just if the public has anything else they have to say, please, just submit it to us, and we're going to make sure that the applicant addresses the concerns. And we're definitely going to look at it on our end and make sure that your concerns do not fall on deaf ears. But I think, Mr. Chairman, what you said is about right, this is four months. Usually, most public hearings do not go past one month, this is probably one of the longest ones we've had in many years. So I think it's time that we can close this, let them submit some written comments over the next week, and then we can move on.
Thank you, I started on your side, so I'll go over to Fred next, and when you speak, just, yeah, there you go.
Well, I agree, we've heard an awful lot of information, a lot of it started to become repetitive. Unless somebody has something absolutely new out there, I think we have a good handle on everything that everybody has said, and I agree with the chair, and we'll leave it open until a week from tomorrow.
Yep.
Jody?
I agree. I agree, I have no further comments.
And Bob?
I agree, I mean, the comments are there, but we're going to have to do our job on our end now.
And Ravi?
Yeah, I agree, I mean, we can close the public hearing and keep it open online for a week.
All right, so at this point, would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing for official support center of Jehovah's Witnesses site development plan, and to allow a written comment period until the close of business on Friday, July 22, 2022?
So moved.
Felix moves it, do we have a second?
Second.
I got Jody as a second discussion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain, we have John abstaining. So motion passes six-zero. We will continue discussion of this application on tonight's agenda under project reviews. The next public hearing we have tonight is for Johnson Trails five-lot subdivision at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter is possible. Applicant seeks approval to subdivide a 7.2 acre parcel into five lots. Lot one shall consist of 1.77 acres, lot two shall consist of 1.19 acres, lot three shall consist of 1.16 acres, lot four 1.32 acres, and lot five 1.04 acres. All lots shall be served by individual wells and septic. A road shall be constructed through the existing adjacent parcel identified, I'm not going to read the tax path number, but adjacent parcel allowing access to Mountain View Road. The parcel for this proposal is in the R-40 zoning district and is located on Route 82 adjacent to Mountain View Road and Penny Place. Would somebody please make a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
Fred moved it, and Felix seconded discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, vote passes six-zero. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening. Thank you, Board, Board members. Mike Gillespie from M. Gillespie and Associates, I'm the consulting engineer for the project. We're here tonight for the public hearing. We've been before the board for a number of months, making certain modifications based upon comment and requests of the consultants, so at the last meeting, the board felt that it was appropriate to move forward relative to the public hearing, and here we are. Other than what was notified on the agenda, the property is a 7.2 acre parcel. What's being proposed is a total of five lots, these are single-family homes. This is a permitted use within the R-40 zoning district, and actually, everything around the perimeter of the property is also single-family residential home, so effectively befitting with what's there. The property is being served by onsite wells, onsite septics, we do not have services in that area. We evaluated at one point a number of different layouts, and the layout that we're proposing comes in about a 400-foot-long cul-de-sac coming in off of Mountain View Road. There is frontage on 82 as well as Penny Place. To note, on Penny Place, there's actually a very abrupt ending to that, so to accommodate some of the concerns of the town highway as well as fire, we are proposing a, and it's shown on the south side of the map here to your left, we're proposing a hammerhead cul-de-sac, which will allow, with actually with shoulders that will allow the snow to be removed easier and allow for the plow trucks, rather than plowing Penny Place and pushing it to the end and then backing out, or turning around in someone's driveway to actually be able to turn around in that particular location. Long and short, that is the proposal, and we look forward to public comment.
Thank you. We did receive one emailed comment prior to tonight's hearing, dated July 13, from Timothy Pagano. The topics brought up in his email included wanting data to be provided by the applicant to show that the new wells won't impact existing wells on neighboring existing properties, and concerns about the proposed road exiting onto Mountain View Road and the possibility of access to 82. So I've already read the rules of conduct for public hearings, I'm not going to do that again, but for those of the public who wish to speak at tonight's public hearing for this application, Johnson Trails five-lot subdivision, please raise your hand, and when recognized, please come up to the podium and give us your name. I'll start with you, sir. Yeah.
My name's Dan McNally, I live in 37 Mountain View Road. This development's going to be right in my backyard. And I just have a couple questions about, once it gets started, how long will it take, you know, the completion date? I mean, it's, they're going to build one house, try and sell it, go on? This could be dragged out for years and years, and I'll have construction work going on in my backyard. Also, is there going to be a performance bond? In other words, are they going to start something, not finish it, and we'll end up with a derelict construction site similar to where we have at the corner of 82 and 52? So that's a concern. And also with what Mr. Pagano had said, something about Route 82 coming on and off. There are other ways, there's Penny Lane, there's, they do have an access going out to 82, which they're not going to use, but I'm just worried about the ongoing traffic. Figure each house has three to four cars, that's 15 to 20 extra cars on Mountain View going by everybody's house, my house especially. And once again, I would like to think about the well water situation, and everybody there has wells. We add five more wells, is that going to impact the aquifer system and, you know, take my water away? I know that some of the houses have very low wells, one house is like 30 foot, mine's only 70, so that's an issue also. And also, how much land clearing? Are they going to clear cut everything? Are they going to leave trees, are they going to leave buffer zones? Will they put in, say, like pine bushes or pine trees between the existing houses that are there? Those are just some thoughts I wanted to bring up and share them with you. Thank you very much.
Yes, you, sir, in the back.
Good evening, thanks for hearing us. My name is Luigi Manente, I'm 22 Penny Place, I'm that house right on the corner, the old Johnson House, I guess people know it by. We bought this house last year, we had baby number four, we needed a bigger house, and one of the reasons why we loved that house was because it was a dead end. The house that we lived in before, we lived in a nice community, we lived on a corner, and we had people fishtailing around the corner, driving through, almost hit, we had 16 kids on that corner, and on a number of occasions, almost hit the kids. The house that we have now on Penny Place, we love it because it is a dead end. We have seven kids on that road, at least seven kids on that road, that literally play on the road every day. They ride their bikes out, they throw the football around, cars, they come maybe halfway up, they see a dead end, they stop, they back out. They notice that it's not a cul-de-sac, they notice that it's not a drive-through, so they don't come speeding straight through. So my biggest concern, obviously, is the fact of using Penny Place. One, I mean, extending it, I was very grateful looking at the plan, seeing that they were going to keep it as a quote-unquote dead end, even though it's more of like a hammerhead cul-de-sac, as they call it. But I would really love to just see it as a dead end, for the sake of our families, for the sake of our children. Obviously, you know, hearing some of the other concerns about the well waters and all that kind of stuff, those are concerns of ours as well, but this was the biggest one for us, because our kids love that road, they love being out there, they love being able to play with each other, and having cars flying up and down that road. They have a cul-de-sac like that, people don't see the end of the road, and they'll still fly up thinking they can come through, they can turn around. So that's really my concern coming up here. Thank you, guys, for hearing me.
God bless you. Thank you. Show of hands of anybody else?
Hello, my name is Dominic Scecatano, I'm a resident of Fishkill since 1957. We bought our home on Mountain View Road in 1987. And I share some of the concerns with my neighbors, you know, aquifer, the effect on the aquifer, I had to own a home on Lake Road, and the aquifer has been affected, had to re-drill a well there. Some of the concerns that I have, I mean, we all know about the traffic here in Fishkill, and it's really, really magnified a lot, you know, it's pretty intense, especially certain hours of the day. Coming in and out of Mountain View Road right now, if I were to say it's a challenge, you know, that's putting it lightly, especially late in the afternoon and/or in the morning, three, four hours in the morning, three, four hours in the afternoon. With this property having access to Route 82, or the potential for having access to Route 82, I think that should be addressed. For the concerns of the people in the neighborhood who have children, people who are pulling in and out of Mountain View Road on a daily basis, this is going to increase as there are going to be more cars. We have right now, directly across from Mountain View Road, there's a driveway that services residential properties behind Florinas Restaurant and Last Margaritas. So coming out of Mountain View Road now, you've got cars coming from a parking lot from Last Margaritas, you have cars coming from the parking lot at Florinas, and sometimes cars coming from the residential property in the back. So you really have to have your wits about you, because not only do we have that factor, this is a busy spot, it really is. We have a blind hill on the left-hand side, as you face Route 82 on the left-hand side, depending on the speed of the cars, it can be hazardous, to say the least. Pulling in and out, you know, waiting for traffic, pulling into Mountain View Road as you come from the Hopewell area, the cars line up behind you. We've got residents trying to come out, you know, neighbors trying to come out, heading towards Fishkill, and it's really, it's really a struggle sometimes. So this is my issue, there's really no need to be funneling traffic through Mountain View Road and then onto an already very busy intersection. Spread the traffic out, put it down the road where the access is on 82, that would be, I think, best for everybody concerned. I don't know how it affects their plans to build. I know Joe and Al very well, most of my life, and, you know, I'm not aware that going out, directly out onto Route 82 is going to cause a problem. So I think, looking at the site of, you know, that was laid out originally, it was originally laid out to have access to Route 82, and that's where it is, and that's where I think it should be, that's where the access should be for the property. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Constance Wynett.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to just pull the microphone, I'm sorry. Wanted to cut you off quickly before you got down.
Yeah, okay. Constance Wynett, I live on Cherry Lane, I've been there for 25 years. When we first moved in, the homes were owned by the original owners. We were one of the first young families that moved into the neighborhood, and the neighborhood has been turning over, and there are more and more children and more pets, which is wonderful. There's more walkers, more street play, bikes, it's a really good thing to see, having kids outside. We also have Greenhaven Rod and Gun Club in the back of our neighborhood. They have events several times of the year, and that's fine, we love having them there, they've done events with the Boy Scouts, but it's a lot of added traffic in very concentrated times. Building new homes in the area is part of life, we're not dumb, we have no qualms with that. However, this property has access clearly off of Route 82, you can see that on the geomapping, and one would assume that was intentionally for access to this property. Five nice-sized homes translates to families, translates to cars, a minimum of 15 cars. Making a left off of Mountain View Road is already an issue each and every one of us can attest to. This proposed road off of Mountain View would only make the situation worse. We have to deal with the plaza on Route 82 being just one huge driveway. There are cars going every which way sometimes, and trying to turn out of the neighborhood is a problem. When fellow drivers on Route 82 attempt to be nice and let you make your left turn, cars behind them or from the plaza try to go around them. I've personally had a car accident from that. Okay? There's a slight hill on Route 82, as Dom had mentioned, and that makes visibility not that great. Adding more cars to this would only be, undeniably, would not be a smart thing to do. Penny Lane would be the next logical access point, since it abuts the property, but since this is an existing road. However, this would bring cars further into the neighborhood, which we don't want. This is what we want to avoid. Direct access to Route 82 is available and should be used. Funneling traffic through our neighborhood is not at all what we want. It also seems very odd to me that Mr. Morgan, who won't even let Central Hudson trim his trees, because they get so crazy about that, is a lot, wants a road right in his side yard. I can't for the life of me understand that. But anyway, we are your constituents, we do support the town, we're taxpayers, and we really ask that you listen to us. This is a beautiful old neighborhood, and it's very established, and we really feel that it's at its max, and we ask that you respect that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak on this? Yes, sir.
The proposed plan to build houses is actually, will border my property. My real concern is, has the town board and the town engineer and the town counselor considered what I consider my water? My water was dug, and an application was filed by the well digger, and I'm concerned when I saw how close the road is going to be to my well, I got very upset in the last couple of weeks, to the point that when I got the notice, I was told that no one would speak to me about the regulations that a well digger put that well on my property at the bordering property is an acre and a third. And as a town, I wonder if the town board has looked into whether that new road and the possible spillage of a chemical or anything would affect my well. That's my major concern. I had other concerns, one of my neighbors happened to bring it up, and I just kind of chuckled to myself that I lost my great Norwegian maple tree, because nowadays, Central Hudson doesn't care whether the tree is of any value to the landowner. I'll admit, the tree was there before I moved to my address at 49 Mountain View Road, but I've had some problem because now Central Hudson, all as they care... had some problem, because now Central Hudson, all they care about is servicing our neighbors, which I don't object to. When they came to me and said they're condemning my tree, and I said, "Well, what right have I have to keep the tree, since it's still of value to me?" They said, "Well, if you don't agree, we're going to top, because it extends over top of the existing wires." I didn't know if I went to some lawyer, whether I'd stand a chance fighting that issue. So lo and behold, I've lost my shade. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Yes, you, sir.
My name is Alan Wooton, and my wife and I have just moved to the neighborhood. We have the house directly across the street from this access point. We're at 44 Mountain View. And I'm from a small town in North Carolina, and if you can't tell. So one of the things that drew us to this community is the, not a lot of access. It's not a through neighborhood. It's a neighborhood that has one way, two ways in, two ways out. The road that's coming in, the children, the people that are walking, the neighbors, it's a tight-knit community that we have just fallen in love with. And for us to be directly across from the impact of the trash trucks, the plows that come through in the winter, the 10 to 15 to 20 cars, the visitors, the parties, everything that comes along with being a homeowner and entertaining people, I just think it's a horrible idea, and I think my wife is with me on that. So, thanks.
Anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? I'm not seeing any additional members of the public wishing to speak, so I will just ask our attorney and engineer if there's any reason at this point. John, is there any additional information that we're waiting on that would warrant us keeping this hearing open?
I would say, you know, if the board would like to have the applicant's engineer provide responses to some of the concerns tonight, then you may wish to keep it open for one additional meeting. I will say that there were a lot of comments about well impacts, and we have asked, and the applicant's engineer has agreed to put notes on the plan, that they will approach neighbors to monitor wells when they have to do their pump tests, which the Health Department will require. So that is something that's in the works. But as far as the Route 82 access, that's something you may want, wish to have them respond to. Whether or not you need to keep the hearing open or not for that, I'm not, you know, that's up to you.
Dominic, what are your thoughts on that?
I agree. I think that the public has raised issues that the applicant should address, including access and impacts on surrounding wells. But that information, you know, will be helpful for the board and the board's decision-making process. So in the absence of having any other issues that have been raised by the public, you know, it's really the board's discretion as to whether or not you want to keep the public hearing open or not.
Yeah, I mean, once the hearing is closed, there's a certain amount of time for us to draft the EAF Part II and III and make the determination of significance in some of these items tonight.
Well, that's correct. I mean, in the sense that, I mean, there's no default approval without seeker being completed. So you're not in danger of having that happen. But if there's open issues that the applicant hasn't addressed, then the likelihood of, you know, concluding the seeker process, you know, is not high.
Dominic, I'm gonna start with you, Felix, and what your thoughts are.
Just real quick, before we make a decision on it, I know the gentleman had his hand up again. I don't know if we want to grant him a chance to come up and say anything before.
I believe he already spoke.
Okay.
I understand he's got a question, but...
So, you know, I think, I think the consultants kind of gave us a route here, where I think we should, we'll keep it open for another meeting and see how things are addressed. Because there are some concerns here that I think need to be addressed, basically. So I'm in favor of keeping the public hearing open for another meeting.
Okay. Fred?
I don't know if anything new is going to come forward for public hearing. Excuse me, I don't think anything else is going to come through for a public hearing. The major concerns I heard, I believe we're going to handle, which is Route 82 and the well water. Unless something new is going to come forward.
About the location of the road to my property.
I'm sorry, we can't, we can't allow comment from the public at this point. I do hear you, but I, we can't...
Yeah, I don't see a real need for it, but if the majority wants it, we can always keep it open. You know, we're doing great with all these public hearings.
I agree with Felix.
Yeah, I think there's legitimate concerns for the traffic and egress and, well, of course, because, you know, I don't have that issue, but I guess it is a grave concern when you have some wells that are low.
Robbie?
Yeah, I'm okay with keeping it open for one more month, and meanwhile, applicant can hopefully address the concerns raised.
I tend to side with Fred on this, with the items being brought up, but I do understand the concerns of the board to keep the hearing open. And it sounds like there's, you know, four of us who would be for doing that, and, you know, so I did see the applicant come up to the podium, so I'll let you...
Sometimes I get up here and it'd be, it's a big push. It's not...
You're allowed to come up.
So if the board wants to kick it out a month, let us get together that information. I mean, we pretty much have responses to those, other than the one I want to check out regarding the end of the cul-de-sac and the lighting on the adjoining property owner. We'll do a little nosing around on that, but, you know, it would be fine if...
And there is the project review later tonight, so we can talk about some of those items as well.
Right, right.
But I appreciate you coming up to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Dominic, do we need to make a motion, we need to make a motion to keep the hearing open until the August...
Yes, you should declare that the public hearing will be held over to a specific date.
So I will entertain a motion to continue or keep the public hearing open until the August 10, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Felix, you have a second?
Second.
Give that one to Bob.
Yeah.
Discussion?
I think it's August 11, right?
Is it August, it's 11th?
11th.
11th, yeah.
10th, yeah, 11th. We'll go with that. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? John's not here, so, and it's 6-0. Motion passes. So we will continue this discussion of the application later tonight during project review.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. The next agenda item is another public hearing for Little V Farms LLC, two-lot subdivision, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter is possible. Applicant seeks approval to subdivide a 25.17-acre parcel into two lots, Lot 1, 2.14 acres, and Lot 2, 23.02 acres. Lot 1 shall include the existing single-family dwelling and associated barn, private well, septic system, and other supporting site elements that are currently situated near Baxter Town Road. Lot 2 shall include all other existing features that are currently on the parent lot. No land disturbance, no construction, no development, and no improvements are proposed for this subdivision. And the parcel is located at 284 Baxter Town Road and is in the R40 zoning district. At this time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
I got Fred moved it, and Felix seconded. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes 6-0. So, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bean Alonso from the Batolia Alons Architectural Group, and I'm representing Little V Farms and the Velartes. And, Mr. Chair, I think that you...
Excuse me, excuse me, just one second.
Sure.
I understand there's a conversation going on in the back of the room. If that could please be taken outside of this room, I would appreciate it. Thank you. I apologize.
Oh, not a problem.
Go ahead.
I don't really have much to say. I think your summary pretty much encapsulates the nature of the project. Again, there's no, there's no construction or land disturbance associated with this, no change in use, no increase in population and what have you. So there's really not much more to add to the summary that you already gave.
Okay, thank you. We've already read the rules of conduct, so at this point, I will see and ask the public if there are any, is anybody who wishes to speak on this application. When recognized, please come up to the podium and give us your name and address. Show of hands. I'll give it five seconds. I'm seeing no hands. So I am not going to ask our consultants what they think about closing the public hearing tonight. I will entertain a motion...
You should definitely keep it open.
I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Motion?
Yes, so moved.
Yeah, I'll give it to Felix. Second?
Second.
Question? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries 6-0. This agenda item does appear later on the agenda as well under project reviews. Our fourth and final public hearing is for Walmart Fishkill MFC Market Fulfillment Center Site Development Plan Amendment. At 7:00 PM or soon thereafter is possible. Applicant seeks approval for Site Development Plan Amendment to construct a 28,000-square-foot building expansion for a new MFC Market Fulfillment Center with associated parking and grading, including a truck well for loading/unloading, sidewalks, a short-term bicycle parking area, the relocation of the current bus stop and current garden center, and other associated improvements. The parcel for this proposal is located at 26 West Merritt Boulevard in the PSC Planned Shopping Center zoning district. Will someone please make a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
Felix moved it. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got Jody as a second. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries 6-0. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mark Talbert with Dewberry. We're the civil engineering consultants for the Walmart project, and I don't really have much to add. We've talked about this one a few times. So I'm happy to answer specific questions, and I know we may get some of that at the plan review or the project review section of the agenda, but I'm happy to answer any questions now, if there are any.
Okay, at this time, I will see if the public, anybody in the public wishes to speak on this agenda item. When recognized, please come up to the podium, give us your name and address. I'm seeing no hands. Felix, you seen any?
No.
All right.
No.
All right, so would somebody like to make a motion to close this public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Fred moves it. Second?
Second.
Second.
Jody said that?
Jody seconded.
You got Jody?
Yeah.
So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? No. Motion carries 6-0. This agenda item will also appear later on in the meeting tonight under project reviews. The next item we have is a request for extension of approval, and that is the Doochy Two-Lot Subdivision. Board to consider granting an extension of the resolution of preliminary and final approval, which was adopted by the board on January 13, 2022, and set to expire July 12, 2022. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. So you're here for the extension?
Yes, for the extension. Yeah, we had, I know it was approved by then, and when we applied during the winter to the Health Department, they said they were anywhere from eight to 16 weeks behind schedule, and that my project was a small project, so they wouldn't get to it right away. We submitted all the papers for board health approval in the beginning of March, and getting any reply at all from the Health Department until almost the end of May, which then I had went to see if I could get, how to apply for an extension and stuff. And then the Health Department called me and said that, because the project was small, and they were working on so many big projects, and because of COVID and lack of staff, that they were way behind schedule, and they just couldn't get to it. So I've done all the tests, all the papers are submitted to the Health Department. I've just been waiting to hear back from them.
Okay, I'll ask you, Dominic, is there any comments or thoughts on...
No, an extension would be entirely appropriate at this time. My recommendation would be to make it run for six months, and that would take it out to the January meeting, the date of the January 23 meeting, it's the first time I think I've said 2023, would be January 12.
Okay, so the board, does the board have any thoughts on that for a six-month extension of the preliminary and final approval for this project?
No, I think it'll be fine.
No, it's fine.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the request for a six-month extension of the resolution of preliminary and final approval for the Doochy Two-Lot Subdivision to January 12, 2023?
So moved.
Felix moved it.
Second.
Bob seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The motion carries 6-0. I think we're all set on that.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Should we...
Go on, look for the difference.
Yeah, you want to... All right.
Or I can just go out in the lobby and speak to them, because I'm having a hard time here.
We could do a five-minute, a five-minute to, little more than five, we'll call it 8:35, and we will reconvene. Okay. Okay, we're going to continue on with the agenda under new submittal, Fishkill Self-Storage Facility Special Use Permit and Site Development Plan. This is a continuation of the new submittal that was discussed by the Planning Board at their May 12, 2022 meeting, and deferred at the June 9, 2022 meeting at the applicant's request. Applicant seeks Site Development Plan Approval and Special Use Permit Approval for the construction of a two-story, 51,500-square-foot self-storage facility, along with associated access, parking, landscaping, lighting, and signage. The parcel for this proposal is identified, I'll mention the zoning district, it's 4.7 acres in the RB Restricted Business Zoning District. Self-storage facilities are not listed as permitted uses in the RB zoning district. Applicant requests that the Planning Board apply the provisions of Code Section 150-19B of the Town of Fishkill Code to authorize the proposed self-storage facility through the issuance of a special use permit in conjunction with Site Development Plan Approval. Refer application to the Town Engineer, Town Planning Board Attorney, Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, New York State Department of Transportation, and the Chelsea Fire District. The board will allow informal comments from the public after discussion of the acceptance of this application. And before I get started here, I'm actually going to go to our consultants. We prepared a memo, and I believe that was the reason for us to get some feedback from our consultant and to continue the discussion from the last meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Dominic, and we'll go from there.
No, thank you, Mr. Brocher. So the applicant, as part of their initial submission, they had requested a determination from the Planning Board pursuant to the zoning code 150-19B to permit a self-storage facility use in the RB zoning district. As you know, self-storage uses are not expressly allowed in the RB district. And then the issue that was raised by the applicant and was referred to me by... to me by the board for providing my legal opinion, was whether or not the board should determine that a self-storage facility is an allowed special permitted use in the RB zoning district pursuant to the provisions of Town Zoning Code 150-19B without undertaking an environmental review of the project. Put another way, should the determination regarding the self-storage facility use be deemed a seeker type-two action at the outset of the application and a determination made without undertaking a complete review of the application? I looked at this issue, and I provided a memo to the board. I'm just going to read the summary, given the number of items that we have to discuss tonight. The summary that I provided to the board, as well as the discussion, and we can go into anything that you would like, was that seeker type-two actions are a specific list of actions that have been predetermined to have little to no environmental impact. Here, the planning board's determination that the use is allowed in the district would confer a right upon the applicant to seek and potentially obtain a special permitted use for its project. Doing so without conducting an environmental review would in essence prejudge a critical determination required for this project to proceed. Doing so would also constitute seeker segmentation, which is highly discouraged. For the reasons discussed below, the planning board should consider the entirety of the application and its potential impact prior to making any determination regarding the use of the property. And my memo goes on to explain the reasons for that. And then I conclude, if I may, that the planning board should reject the applicant's request to make an initial determination that the proposed self-storage use in the RB zone can be considered as a special permitted use without first having the benefit of conducting an environmental review. The specific requirements of zoning code 150-19B require the planning board to make certain findings, including a finding that the proposed use is of no greater environmental impact than other permitted uses in the zone. The planning board would not be in a position to make that determination now without the benefit of first conducting an environmental review. At this time, subject to any comments from the planning board or the planning board engineer, the planning board should proceed with a coordinated review of the application. A key component of the coordinated review will be the referral of the matter to the New York State Department of Transportation, given the site's location on New York State Route 9D. Traffic-related impacts and their potential mitigation will be a central element for the board to consider in making both a determination of significance for this project, but also making a determination regarding the proposed special permitted use. And welcome, Mr. Cantor.
Thank you. Thanks, Dominic. Thanks for going over the memo. And sorry for my lateness, but I am here, and thanks to Anthony for taking over for a while.
You're on.
Thanks.
Tag, you're it.
Thanks. Yeah, and I got here in time to hear all of Dominic's description, and I do agree with Dominic's conclusions and recommendations. So at this point, before we let the applicant speak, I just wanted to go around and see what others on the board thought about the process, and based on what we've heard from Dominic, if anyone has any, you know, further ideas, conclusions.
No, I, I think the recommendation is to, you know, make the findings, you know, so it's, in my mind, a logical step. So I, I don't, it seems to make sense to me.
Felix?
Mr. Chairman, the first time they came in front of us, that question was asked, and I felt the same way then I feel now, is that I wouldn't feel comfortable making that determination unless we were going through the seeker process. So I agree with Dominic, and yeah, that was my initial feeling on that.
Thanks.
I lean to more experienced people.
All right, and Jody?
I agree with them.
The seeker, yeah, it's definitely, yeah, in traffic concerns.
All right. I think the board is all very much in agreement with what Dominic has brought up, so I'll turn this over to the applicant team now. Feel free to respond with any thoughts that you have at this point.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alec Lad from Cuddy &amp; Fader, Land News Council for the property owner and applicant who is here with me this evening, Nadal Hassan. So I guess just to start where the board did, I just want to note our objection to proceeding in this manner. We don't think it is an action subject to seeker. It doesn't commit the board to any future course of action, and it doesn't cause any approvals, which would lead to land disturbance activities. But that being said, we were also a little concerned in getting that report, so Nadal did start looking at potential alternative options depending on kind of how tonight went. And as you know, there are several permitted uses in this district, such as motels, hotels, resorts, restaurants, offices, medical and dental clinics, congregate care facilities. There's residential uses, such as subdivisions, mobile home parks, and hospitals, nursing homes, convalescent homes, and the list goes on and on, all of which we don't think are, you know, as, in our opinion, as good of a solution for, for the site as are self-storage use, which preserves 70% as green space. And I can run through that as much as you want. So we were really looking for some candid feedback from the board on their thoughts on the use, and whether you see yourself or you envision this site being developed as self-storage, because if not, you know, I think we're going to have to go back to the drawing board and come back with a permitted use, because we don't want to go down this path of conducting a full seeker review without that guarantee of risk, or of use, because that is a big risk. So really, you know, speak now on how you feel about it, or forever hold your peace, because we do want that, that feedback, and to have a candid discussion about how you feel about this site and the best use for it. Yeah, so I guess I'll throw it back to the board to, anything and everything that you got for us.
Well, I think we got what we asked for, and that was a recommendation from our attorney. I don't think any of us, and I'll speak for the board, and everyone else can answer as well, that we are not in a position to weigh in on the appropriateness of a self-storage use until we do go through the seeker process. So if you're not comfortable with that process, then I guess you should go back to the drawing board. By no means, and I said this at a previous meeting, are we implying or making any kind of judgments at this point about the appropriateness of a self-storage use, but we're also not saying that we will make any conclusions one way or the other until we do go through the seeker process. So, you know, it's basically up to you as the applicant to decide how you really want to approach this.
I, I agree with you, John. I mean, we're not saying that this, this use that's being presented before us is necessarily better or worse than any of the allowable uses, but I, I think what we're saying is, if they wish to proceed in this manner with this application, that we would have to go through the seeker process, and I, it just makes sense to me. I, I agree with you. The last sentence you said kind of encapsulated it for me, which was, we're not, we're not opining one way or the other at this point. We're just outlining the step that we, steps that we believe need to be carried out in order to possibly move along with this application. I, I don't think we're really saying one way or the other tonight.
Yeah. I mean, there are actions we can take tonight if you decide you would like to pursue the application for the self-storage facility, which could range from, well, basically accepting the application and referring it on to other agencies as, as we originally had set out to do, even going on to classifying the application as a self-storage use as unlisted, because that's probably what it would be.
Yep.
Possibly even, I was even thinking this myself, you know, we're under the special permit provisions of Section 150-19B of the town code, and making a determination about the use, we are asked to get the input of the town's building inspector, zoning administrator, prior to our making a determination. We could actually even refer it to that, that office tonight as well, and this would be strictly for not his determination or any actual action, but simply for the building inspector's recommendation to the planning board on how he sees that use. So I mean, there are things we can do to start moving it along, but there's nothing further we could do in terms of, you know, helping it out with your decision.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Look, I just want to say that, like, we started this process, let's say, give or take, I think about three and a half years ago or something like that, and we've been through a lot of items, like, a lot of uses on the, on, that were permitted in the zoning, and the way we got to this use was working with Greg Bentley from DOT, not sure if you guys are familiar with him, and, and he recommended that we should do something like self-storage in order to keep the, you know, the traffic density down in that, like, you know, in that particular corridor. And we did get a letter from, of support from DOT for, you know, for storage, and we also agreed, I just wanted to make it clear, that we also were open to not only keeping, not only giving another lane to that corridor to help relieve, you know, like, the congestion over there, to turn onto the 84, but also we said that we would keep the, on the 84, there's like a, a proposed use right off the 84 for the women's prison, you know, in the back over there. So we said we would keep that area clear, so that in the future, if there was any proposal and there was any need for a service road, we would keep that space clear. So I just want to say that we're, we've been really trying to, like, work with you guys to come up with the best solution where there's no congestion, no traffic, and, you know, I guess better possibilities for the future over there. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, normally, and again, I don't know if there's anyone in the audience who came tonight to speak to the proposed self-storage use. So why don't we give the public a chance for their informal comments about just where we stand right now? You know, we still have consideration of acceptance of this application, and I'd love to hear from those members of the audience who would like to speak. So why don't we do that now?
Dominic? We're still on the, the same rules apply?
Yes.
The public hearing rules that I read earlier?
Yes, thanks. Thanks for reminding me.
Sorry. He's reminding me to set my timer.
Would you like to take over this part?
No. Not at all.
So, yeah, we're limiting comments to four minutes. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and we'd be glad to hear what you have to say.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Robert Johnson. I live at 15 Van Ness Road in the town of Fishkill. I've resided there for the last 21 years with my wife and my two children. I submitted written comments that you will have available to you, in which I opposed the application. So in my four minutes, what I'll do is I'll summarize what my written comments were, and others can speak to some of the other issues. As the board, I think, knows, last year, the Town of Fishkill zoning laws were revised, and one of those revisions involved the Town of Fishkill's schedule of regulations for non-residential districts. I attached a copy of that as Exhibit A to my papers. And in that, with respect to the restricted business zone, there's a minimum acreage of five acres. Throughout the applicant's papers, from their initial application to the architect's rendering, to a recent tax bill, the acreage is 4.7 plus or minus. That's not five acres. It doesn't meet the minimum requirement. That prompts the question, what discretion does the board have? If you look at page three of Exhibit A, you'll find in footnote C, it spells out very clearly what the planning board's discretion is in this type of case. And to sum it up, there's very little discretion that the board has, and in fact, with respect to this property, there's no discretion. I'll read from the relevant part. "In no case shall the minimum lot size for the relevant use be varied by the planning board, except," this is the only exception in all of this detailed footnote C, "except in situations where the planned business or restricted business uses are proposed in the general business zone." That's not the case here. The case is much different. "The district intent is clear, and the only reasonable reading of these regulations is that the minimum lot size requirement was something that the zoning laws deemed imperative, and that the planning board had no authority to change. The application is defective as a matter of law and cannot be cured by the planning board, because in order to do so, the planning board would have to exceed its authority, because under this footnote C, there is no authority to change the minimum lot size. It's unfortunate that the applicant purchased the property that didn't meet the minimum acreage, but there's nothing that the planning board can do about it. It must be denied. In order for you to change that minimum lot requirement, it would force you to exceed your authority, abuse your discretion, and hold this board up to the accusation that you were acting in an arbitrary and capricious manner. And I think you know that would form the basis of an Article 78 proceeding. Simply put, the applicant is just out of luck. His real estate investment did not turn out the way he hoped it would be, and that's unfortunate. For at least 50 years, for the whole time that I've been living on Van Ness, and up to and maybe more than 50 years, a one-family dwelling was constructed on this property. Now, the applicant is coming along and trying to take advantage of the situation and hoping that the planning board will go along with it. Under the law, you're not permitted to. I respectfully request the application be denied. Thank you."
I was just going to give you the warning. Who else would like to come up to speak? Please, come on up.
Well, that was quite an arsenal. Thank you. As a resident in Beacon who will be impacted daily by this application, I am opposed to changing the zoning district with a special use permit to allow this self-storage facility at this location.
Could we just ask you for your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Teresa Kraft.
Thank you.
Granted, some will say it's better than the, maybe a gas station, or the long list of permitted uses with heavier traffic. This will still bring in massive traffic and constantly 24/7 activities next to a residential neighborhood and a routinely congested roadway. We think the traffic is horrendous now at this 90 and Interstate 84 corridor. Just keep approving these overdevelopment projects. They will be part of your legacy. Residents will remember forever. Don't do it. Deny it.
Who else would like to come up and speak? Yes, in the back.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Lola McCray. I live at 2 Van Ness Road, which is on the corner of Van Ness Road, the street immediately south of the property in the application, and on the corner of that and 90. I bought this property recently, and I moved in recently. And I have several concerns. When I bought the property, I was under the understanding that the property adjacent in question was residential. So you can imagine my concerns about quality of life and property value if a giant storage facility is constructed there. Me and my neighbors also just have concerns about, obviously, traffic on 90, which is already- already very scary. And we have serious concerns about the environmental impact of not only the construction of such a facility, but the removal of trees, the light pollution, and our ability to enjoy our property with what we imagine is a monstrosity in our backyard. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yep, come on up.
Sorry, I didn't break a paper, so, I'm not trying to.
That's fine.
Sean Stewart, I live at 6 Van Ness. Um, I appreciate the, the opportunity to speak, and, and I'm really encouraged by, uh, the board's, um, thoughtfulness, uh, already that's been shown regarding the environmental review and even listening to the applicant's, um, concerns. Um, so, I simply wanted to reference the Fishkill Comprehensive Plan and then somewhat a few, a few spots that I thought were relevant here. Create gateways that welcome visitors to our town and define Fishkill as a quality community. The entrance, the entrances to our town along the main roadways establish the first impression people have of Fishkill. These gateways should define our town as a quality community. Objective: Preserve the existing rural and scenic character of Route 9D and Route 9 at the entrances of the town to maintain the town and country character and to distinguish Fishkill for neighboring municipalities. Also reference Section G. Create great places for people. Encourage walking and social interaction in parks and trails that provide opportunities for active and passive recreation. New development should reflect a human scale. Natural areas should be incorporated into, into site design by creating public greens and pocket parks in high-density areas and by preserving tracks of continuous open space in outlying areas. Um, and that's all I've got. I'm sure you're familiar with the plan more than I am, but thanks so much.
Thank you. Yes. Oh, oh, well, do you want to come up since you're already up? And then, then we'll go over here.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Sorenson. I reside at 10 Van Ness Road. Um, one of the concerns that I have, along with, um, the others that my neighbors have spoken about tonight, is the access for said property. I invite any of you, and all of you, to come by, um, and stand out on Van Ness Road and 9D any time of the day, or even better, come in your car and try to make a left turn in and a left turn out of there. My understanding of this is that, one of the proposals is that there would only be right turns in and out of this facility. Great. If you're coming south on 90 towards Beacon from Wappingers, and you can't make a left into this facility, you can't because you'll take your life into your hands, what are you going to do? You're going to turn onto, left onto Van Ness Road, which is our tiny little dead-end road, and you're going to go into Lola's house, or Sean's house, or any of this, and do your U-turn, or speed down at the end, we already have this, and do the U-turn at the end and come back down and try to get out of there. We have a whole bunch, and it's wonderful, as somebody else spoke earlier on their street, we have small children now who, because of this nice street, are able to play basketball out on the street, ride their bikes out on the street, um, play hopscotch out there. People turn into Van Ness Road expecting that it's going to be a thorough, a thoroughfare through to the other neighborhoods and stuff, find it's not, and just speed up and down there. Um, we have in the, and this, I've lived there for 23 and a half years. We have had nothing but trouble with our intersection that long. We even, back in the day when they first made the two lanes going, it's going north, um, had Joel Miller and the DOT and everybody to Van Ness Road to see the problems. Joel Miller almost got killed coming into our street. Nothing happened as a result of that. We can't get a mirror to see how we can turn in and out of there. We did get a block the box. We were supposed to be guaranteed to have police presence every once in a while, especially during rush hour when the trains get out, especially during when school buses come out because our kids are taking their lives into their hands trying to get across those, those lanes of traffic. I'm just saying it's a nightmare, and to say right turn in, right turn out, it's going to make it even worse for Van Ness than it already is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, come on up.
Good evening, I'm Kelly Antonucci, and I am a town of Fishkill resident, and I would just urge the board to not be swayed by what sounded to me like a threat from the attorney that if this project is not approved, that they're going to find, uh, less suitable, um, projects such as a hotel or a gas station. I, I find that offensive as a town resident. Um, my understanding is that this project went before the zoning board and was not approved, and so then they come to another board. Do you get two bites of the apple, or you just get one and then you move on? Um, these, the self-storage facility is not permitted, so I don't know then why we would change the rules for people as they come along. And I'd really like to know, how does this benefit Fishkill residents? How does this benefit our town? There is a self-storage facility right down the road before you cross over 84, so we already have that. And Greg Bentley that they worked with, does he live in the town of Fishkill, and will he be impacted by this? I do commute to the city, and it is an absolute nightmare. It probably adds about 15 minutes onto my commute to get home because of all of the traffic backing up onto 9D. And I just urge you not to, um, be pressured by the threat and to stay the course, and I agree with everything that these people have shared.
Okay. Yep, come on up.
Um, so, I just want to say that I stand in agreement with everything that everyone has said before you. Um, as a previous town board member, this applicant was before the town board. Um, so, I am really shocked that, um, that the pathway is that if I didn't get what I wanted, one, one board, I would go through another. And so, that, I think, occurred last summer, um, when the town board was actually on the road. Um, we did not deny the applicant, but it did not move further. No one gave a first or a second or anything, so it was just dropped. And so, the fact that they're here, um, now trying to go through the planning board, um, makes me sad. But I would say, when this application cruises to the town board for doing due diligence and coming forward with, um, the request to make the, you know, have them go through SECA, I think that that's important. And also, not being bothered by the fact that, um, very smoothly you were threatened that they would take another route. I think that what the precedence needs to continue to be in Fishkill is that we do need building that's beneficial to the people that live here, that benefit the community, but what we don't need is benefits to just build it. So, I thank you for your time, and please deny this application.
Yep, come on up.
Good evening, my name is Norman Sweeney, and I live on Van Ness Road, and I agree with all what these people have said about the situation. And this building should not be built. Um, I've been living here for over 15 years, and I've seen the traffic levels increase dramatically. I should come from, I work in the city, and I comfort the city just right now. I probably have come in a bit late, but traffic is quite challenging. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else like to speak tonight? Yep, come on up.
Good evening, my name is Amelia Sweeney. I live on 16 Van Ness Road. And I just want to say that already they've started to change things around. The landscape, I mean, just, I guess, was a year ago, they knocked down all these trees. And we're experiencing a lot of noise pollution, so, already, and we could see besides the, uh, the traffic and all. So, we're all wondering, what is it going to look like? Um, and that's where we, uh, this is where our solitary is, you know? We, we moved there because that's what I, we wanted. We wanted nature, Hudson Valley. And it seems like they're going to destroy that. So, I, I urge you to not approve what they want. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else back there? I see people sort of reacting. Anyone want to speak? Nope? Okay. Make sure no one else wants to come up, and I think that should end the informal public comments for tonight. Um, let me just, uh, turn back to our attorney, Dominic Cordisco, to see if you have any other thoughts you want to throw in at this point, and then, basically, I think we'll leave it for the applicant to really make a decision as to what, how you want to proceed.
Yeah, uh, before they do, I just wanted to note that, uh, as part of their original submission, they did include an environmental assessment form. Um, my understanding is, is that CPL has not yet reviewed, uh, the materials that were submitted. Uh, so, my recommendation would be to, uh, refer, uh, the application to CPL so they could start their technical review. Um, it would be, I think, premature to circulate for lead agency at this time, since we haven't had the benefit of CPL's, um, yeah, review on the EAF. There might need to be changes or additional information that should be part of that before it goes out to other agencies. You could also, however, uh, refer the application to, to those agencies, as is your normal practice. Um, but my recommendation would be to, uh, refer this matter to CPL at this time and have them report back so that the, the next meeting the board could, uh, be in a position to, you know, circulate for, uh, lead agency to start that process.
Okay, thanks.
Is that ahead of, is that ahead of accepting or rejecting this application?
Well, um, it's really not so much a matter of rejecting the application. It's, I, my take on it is, it's really up to the applicant at this point, how you want to proceed. And if you want to proceed, we can certainly take up the question of accepting and referring the application. And I, I have some comments I would make about how we're accepting that application, not as complete, but as a process to, to start moving things forward.
Sure. Um, so, we would like to move forward, um, with the board. And from what we've submitted in the record is the fees escrow, application forms, a full environmental assessment form, uh, plans elevations, which are pretty detailed and do contain a lot of the information from the site plan requirements in 150-96, um, and also a preliminary traffic report. So, I guess we're just looking, aside from CPL looking over the full EAF and maybe making some suggestion changes and additions, um, really what else might be missing, um, to accept the application, if that's kind of where you were going.
Well, I, um, I think I would, I'll, I'll look to the board members for ideas, but I would also look to you, the applicant, and the attorney for the applicant, to look very closely through the actual site plan review regulations and the special use permit regulations, and that should be, be a pretty good guide to you as to what additional materials you may need to submit. But again, um, accepting the application at this point, and I kind of wrote myself some notes on it, um, would be really not as a complete application because that doesn't happen until the SECA, um, application is complete, but to start the review process, basically, and simply to refer the application as indicated in the agenda. So, you know, we, um, I think we will probably, if we do decide to refer it to, um, our engineer and again, back to our attorney for actual looking at, you know, the plans that have been submitted and the other, uh, agencies that are listed, um, you know, that will give us a better idea, but I don't think we're prepared tonight to indicate exactly what additional application materials we'll be looking at because that, as you probably are aware, tends to be a, an evolving question as the process continues. But there are certain basic things that would need to be submitted to make it, um, an actual site plan and special use permit, uh, application, and we don't have all those things right now. So, if you'd like to proceed, I can ask the board for, um, further input and see if anybody has a motion, which would be something along the lines of accepting the application for the proposed self-storage use and facility located at 1292 New York State Route 9D. Not as complete, but to start the review process and to review this application to the town engineer, town planning board attorney, Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, New York State Department of Transportation, and the Chelsea Fire District for review and comment. So, um, anybody like to actually make that motion?
I have questions before we make the answer.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Please do.
Please do.
First, I'm very confused about accepting an incomplete application and referring it. I don't think we've ever done that.
So, I'm.
So, that, I, I'm sorry, I apologize. It's just, I, we've never, that I know, done that, and it's, it's throwing me off that we would accept an incom, uh, as we say, an incomplete application, and, and then still refer it for, to, I, I don't know. I, that threw me off, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Yeah, it's a little confusing, yeah.
Let, let me throw it back to you, Felix, then, since you're starting that discussion, and I appreciate it. But what additional materials, then, would you want to see, um, in order to, for your comfortable acceptance?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, you brought up that it was incomplete, um, and.
Well, I want to get your opinion on what that means. What it means to you. Hold on.
Okay.
Hold on.
Mr. Chairman, you brought up that it's incomplete, correct? Yes or no?
In my opinion. I'd like to hear your opinion.
Go with your opinion.
I'd like to hear your opinion. If, if we're not going to get, you know, actual discussion on this tonight, we're not going to get anywhere tonight, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on this because we have a lot of other stuff to get to.
So, then, what are you saying? We should just move it along that way? I, I just, it threw me off the way you said it. That's all.
And we had a comment tonight from, uh, somebody about the town code lot, not meeting the requirement for lot size.
That was going to be my second question.
And if, if this flies in the face of our code, why would we bother accepting it tonight? And I'd like, I'd like my, I'd like our consultant to explain why we would even consider doing this.
Yeah. Uh, one of the initial steps that the board takes, based on my, my month's tenure with you, is that you initially review, you hear public comment regarding applications, and then you make the referrals to your consultants. Uh, this application, apart from the initial procedural step, which was raised by the applicant, hasn't been referred to your consultants. So, there may be technical issues like the one regarding the lot area that would be fleshed out, especially by CPL's review, because they haven't even been authorized to review this application yet. There may be a number of items, connection with the site plan, uh, technical comments, they may have comments on the EAF, which would inform the, the processing of the application. So, I think when we're talking about referral, the, the first step that should be made is referral formally to the board's consultants, the same as you would any other application. It doesn't mean that the board accepts or the premise of the application. It doesn't mean that it is in any way heading down, uh, a path towards approval, but the applicant, however, is entitled to processing of what they've submitted, and there should be a technical review at this time, in my, in my opinion.
That's a good explanation.
And what happens if we don't do that?
The, uh, the action tonight would be to refer this to your board's consultants, uh, if, for, to no one else at this point. It may be premature to send it to DOT or to, um, or, or to anyone else at this point without having the benefit of having an engineering review. You haven't had any engineering review yet on this application.
But based on the consultant reviews, can we still reject the application later?
What's that?
So, sorry, can we still reject the application later if the review comes?
Well, you, you, every applicant is entitled to processing of their application. At some point, when board has enough information in front of it and has conducted a public hearing and has made a, potentially, a secret determination, you're going to have to make certain findings in connection with their proposed use, and whether or not their proposed use is appropriate in the RB zone as a special permitted use. That's going to come much later down, down the process. It would be, in my opinion, premature at this point to make that determination for a number of reasons, because some of the, the procedural steps that have to be made in 150-19B, you know, are referral to the building inspector, a determination regarding the fact that the proposed use is not as environmentally intensive as any other use that's allowed in the district. How you would be able to make those determinations now without having that information in front of you, it would be hard for me to say. So, I think. So I think it would be premature to make that determination now.
And I think also, based on what you've just said, it probably wouldn't make sense to refer it to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development yet, because if they find that pieces are missing, they'll just basically send it right back to us. So I kind of like your clarification and idea that, at this point, we would simply ask for a motion to refer the application, let's not even use the word "accept," because I'm, sometimes I'm not comfortable with using that, as we usually do by practice, because we're not really accepting anything, other than the fact that we're, in effect, referring this to agencies. And so in this case, then, I'll change the way I worded it and see if anybody would like to make a motion simply to refer the application for the Fishkill self-storage use and facility to start the review process and to refer the application to the town engineer and town planning board attorney for review and comment, for, let's say, technical review and comment. Or if somebody would like to change the wording of a motion, that would be fine, too, since you didn't seem to like the way I had it before. Feel free.
So by doing this, if we find, if our consultants find that this doesn't meet town code, does it just stop there? I mean.
Well, no, there's always a path that an applicant can take. I mean, they may decide that they want to apply for variances to meet up for the, to make up, rather, for the insufficient lot area. There is, they're entitled to go through a process, but they're not necessarily entitled to, you know, a certain determination at the end of the process.
And can I just clarify something quick on the lot area?
Yeah.
So we're all on the same page?
Sure.
There's actually two provisions of the code that allow us to move forward with the undersized lot area, which is a pre-existing nonconformity. The first is Section 15030, which says, "When a required area or dimension of lots may be changed by future amendment of the code, any legal lot existing at that date and may not conforming by such amendment may be built upon." And then Section 15029B basically says substantially the same thing, that development is permitted on pre-existing non-conforming lots of an undersized nature, provided all other bulk is complied for, for the applicable district, which we do. We comply with all the bulk requirements of the RB, except for that pre-existing nonconformity on the lot size.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. I think we would certainly, if we do refer it to our town engineer and attorney for the planning board, we certainly want that to be checked into and confirmed.
And can we converse with your consultants directly? Like, I just want to get some feedback on what's considered complete, because I did look at the site plan, and really, the only line item that we didn't submit, other than maybe some details on the drawings, like topography and grading, is a SWIP, which relates to the, kind of that topography and grading stuff. So I just want to see when you want that, that information.
Well, I think that would probably not be appropriate at this particular point. We'd like to hear from our consultants with their, you know, opinion, and then get their reports on that. So, anyone like to make a motion? If not?
Sure. I'll make that motion. I mean, the way you initially said it threw me off, Mr. Chairman, I think I understand where we're going with it now. So I'll make that motion to refer it to our, to our consultants.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Rabby seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
That's two opposed. Let's see, how many do we have voting? Two, three, four, five, six votes. So we have four in favor, two opposed. Is that right?
We have seven people here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Fred is there.
Sorry.
Yeah, you should sit forward, so I can see. I think that's five in favor and two opposed.
Stand.
Okay. So we have that motioned. I think that's basically all we can do tonight.
Yeah, so we'll look for your consultants' review, address them, and we'll come back until we have a submission to make responsive to the comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda, we have project reviews. We're going back to Johnson Trails' five-lot subdivision, or to review the submission Welcome back, Mr. Gillespie. If you'd like to give us a, kind of a brief update on the status of the plans, and so I do understand that the public hearing was held open until the August meeting, is that right?
It was, yes.
Okay.
I've, during the course of that hearing, I took notes and so forth, so we'll go ahead and respond to those accordingly for the next, for the next meeting. We also, the plan really hasn't changed much since it was last before this board. I am receipt of CPL's letter dated July 12th. I think we just have to follow up with the fire department relative to the Hammerhead at the end of Penny Place, and largely, really, just kind of getting the SWIP online and getting that kind of cleaned up, but I don't really think there's a whole lot other to add, other than, other than that.
Okay, well, shall we go to CPL's engineering memo?
Sure. I would agree with that assessment. Majority of our comments in our July 12th memo are related to stormwater and their proposed way of dealing and managing it. We'd like to see a lot of that cleaned up before the next meeting, that would be very helpful. And again, I don't think there was ever any real consideration given to using the Route 82 access point, but there may be good reason for that, so if you could look into that and, and, you know, basically respond to what the public said tonight, I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, we've got that on the list.
Okay. Any questions from board members at this point?
No.
I've got a question regarding the Hammerhead. That was just put in to help remove the snow. It has not any access to any of the houses?
No, if you take a look at that, the plan, existing Penny Place on the bottom shows up as a darker hatch, and it's, it's very thin. So my understanding is now the town highway department comes in, basically plows to the end, and then backs out of Penny Place, or at times actually backs up in one of the driveways of one of the adjoining property owners. So the idea behind that was to really being able to push the snow to the end, find a place for the snow with a, with a wide shoulder, and be able to kind of do a three pivot turn, and then work its way out, instead of backing out of Penny Place.
Okay, but it's not an access to one of the homes?
No.
Okay, just want to confirm.
No.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
No, but we did get, you know, some substantive comments tonight that should definitely be part of the, the record, or at least part of your next letter to the board, as to how those items have been addressed, will be addressed. I think, I think that's an important step, so I would request that the next submit will have a, an explanation of some of the items brought up and responses.
Yeah, and actually, my initial thought, as I was actually watching on TV the public hearing for this, and that's why I was a little bit late, because I really wanted to make sure I heard the comments, is that an access, a new access onto Route 82 could have its own challenges in itself, and so, I don't know, it might be helpful, even if you have a discussion with state DOT about that, and just see if they have any initial thoughts on, on what that would entail.
Before we actually made, just briefly, before we made a formal application to this board, we looked at different options, because we have three areas with, we have various frontages on. One of those was 82. There was a number of reasons as to why that access wasn't considered, relative to vertical site restraints, the proximity of the road directly across the street. We actually did have conversations with DOT, they were kind of pushing against it, so we'll, we'll have a calculated response for the reason we didn't go in that direction.
Okay.
If you have any record of the correspondence with the DOT, that could be.
No, we're gonna, what I hope to have is just at least an email response, so at least we can have that for the record.
That would be helpful.
Okay. Rabby, you have any, any questions or thoughts on it?
No.
No, nothing.
I had a couple of things. So one thing, I was glad to see the addition of the tree preservation plan in the plan set. That actually goes back a couple of meetings now, I think.
Yep.
But it's not clear, really, from that plan, how you propose to implement the tree preservation plan, you know, what, what effect it would actually have, how trees would be protected, for instance, during construction in the areas of disturbance, and I was also glad to see a number of trees in the perimeter areas and the buffers adjacent to existing residential homes. I'm wondering, you know, what steps there may be to, in effect, preserve those into the future. And, I mean, I know one, one thing that's done a lot in, in developments like this may be to have restrictive covenants in the deeds that would identify, you know, the areas and the trees on that preservation plan, and to add notes in the plan as well that would indicate, you know, in effect, what rights the homeowners have. Usually, they'll be things like exempting unhealthy or unsafe trees and allowing them to be cut, but in effect, putting restrictions on the actual lot homeowners, in terms of what they can do in the future with the trees. I was wondering, Dominic, if you might have any ideas on that. But mainly, what I wanted to see was some more notes on the plan, in terms of how the trees would be preserved and where we might go with that. Any thoughts on that, Dominic?
I mean, I think that the applicant should propose how it's going to be implemented, as you suggested. There's a number of different ways to deal with that. Some are more restrictive than others, or complicated and involve third parties, and others could be more like a, you know, declaration of restrictions that go along with the property, but it raises the issue of who enforces it at that time.
Well, let's, let's take a crack at it. You know, you know, these lots are, obviously, we're in our 40s zoning district, so you're talking about a little less than an acre. We've been, we've kind of done it a lot of different ways relative to easements, and I mean, these are, these lots, these lots are kind of tight as they are, so you end up putting an easement. If you end up with that on half the lot, I mean, it just becomes real unappealing for people, as well, to have a lot encumbered like that. But maybe there's some, certainly some notation that we can place on there, and let's, let's come up with a proposal that hopefully would satisfy you, to make sure that that gets implemented, because I think what happens is during the course of construction, initially, that's, that's easier to implement, but then you have people that live there, and they want to put a pool in, and, and, you know, trees come down and things such as that. So, you know, right, somebody's got to monitor that, and then that's the tough part. So there's a couple of different options, but we can certainly propose what we think would make the most sense practically, and to the satisfaction of the board.
Okay.
And if I may add on to that, would be also consistent with the surrounding area, because you would want to have similar restrictions or similar freedoms connection with the lots that are also already in that area, so.
One thing I was just going to confirm was that the town board did recently enact amendments to the local laws on historic structures and sites and the upper protection, and, which would exempt all land use development proposals, where completed applications for developments like this were already outstanding, as, as they put it, on the effective date of the code amendment. So it looks like the adopted amendments basically exempt the Johnson Trails subdivision from having to follow those provisions.
That's my understanding.
Is that your understanding, Dominic?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. All right. So I think, basically, since the hearing was held open, we can't really proceed further at this point on preparation of draft environmental forms. So I think, basically, we'll continue the public hearing at the August meeting, see how that goes, and then move on from there. And again, as much of a, you know, response as you can put together for, on those public hearing comments, in time for the submission date for that hearing, that would be great.
Yep, that's the plan.
Okay.
All right.
Any questions from you?
That's it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Good night, yep.
Okay, the next project review is Millby Farms LLC two-lot subdivision, for to consider authorizing our consultants to prepare a draft EAF Part II, draft EAF Part III, draft negative declaration, and a draft resolution of preliminary and final approval for review at the August 11th, 2022 planning board meeting. Welcome again, Mr. Lanza.
Thank you, good evening.
If you have anything else to add at this point?
I do, I've got a couple of items. One is with regard to land descriptions. The surveyor is currently preparing descriptions for the 2.14 acre parcel, which is parcel one, and the remaining 74.1 acre piece of property, which, 55 acres of which is over in the town of Wapanger. Now, that second description is also going to include some language that describes tax parcel, the resultant tax parcel two, that would be in the town of Fishkill, and the resultant tax parcel that would be in the town of Wapanger. We just want to make sure that, as far as the town is concerned, that it, you know, it's satisfied with that, or if it has any other, any other criteria that it may want in those descriptions.
That's probably more of a legal question than anything else. Any thoughts, Dominic?
I mean, it's hard to respond to that right, right now.
Good, I'm here, glad to hear that.
So, but.
Well, I tell you, you know, why don't we do this? We'll think about it, and when we submit, make the submission for the, to satisfy the conditions of the final resolution, we'll include those descriptions in there. If you have any issues with that, you know, let us know at that point in time, then we'll go ahead and revise them.
Yeah, no, that would be fine.
Okay. And the other item that I'd like to address, or have the board address, is we requested specific waivers, or we want the board to either grant those waivers or otherwise deem that the following items are not required because of the minor nature of the action, the absence of construction and land disturbance, and that there would be no changes in uses and no population increase. And those waivers that we requested included monuments, a school bus pickup area, widening or realignment of the street, walkways and associated easements, and lastly, parkland, and specifically with regard to parkland, if the board hasn't determined that parkland is necessary, for any reason whatsoever as a result of this, we would like the board to. a result of this, we would like the board to specify that if parkland is not required, then an alternative recreation fee would not be applicable.
Well, why don't we talk about that just briefly, just to get that on the record? But I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward in my mind that, and the resolution of approval would probably be very clear, that this would not involve any land disturbance, construction, additional development. And if in the future there were any such things proposed, that that would have to come back to the planning board for additional review, at which point we would make some determinations. But I personally can't see, you know, requiring a park on a site to serve no additional population. And I also can't see charging a recreation fee in lieu of parkland for a subdivision that's not creating any new population. And that's really...
So, as long as those aren't conditions of the final resolution, that I don't have an issue with it.
So, I mean, that's, I think the board should weigh in on that tonight, because we do usually discuss that in subdivisions. And in this particular case, I mean, I would see no problem with including a waiver like that in the resolution of final approval. Any additional thoughts on that? Any agreement or disagreement?
I mean, I agree. I think at the time, if or when another application were to come before our board for that parcel, then that would be part of that process, unless I'm misunderstanding that. So...
No, it's absolutely correct. And just to expand on the chairman's comment is that the determination to require a either parkland or for recreational opportunities or a recreation fee is predicated on the fact of being a demand on the town's parks facilities. And so for here, without an increase in population, where you're literally just carving up an existing parcel into two and not, you know, adding any additional development, at least at this time, that there would, how you would make a determination that there's going to be an impact related to recreational facilities in the town would be, I think, a difficult determination to make.
Yeah, then I agree with the approach that we would be taking tonight, and that's been suggested.
And I would actually even not call it so much a waiver as it is a finding by the board.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine. Again, I'm Machiavellian on this issue. As long as it doesn't show up in the final resolution, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, no, it's actually the other way around, right, is the board makes a finding that there's an impact to recreational facilities, and then, and here, there just wouldn't be a finding to make. So...
Yeah, I think we're on the same page, at least from my standpoint.
And while we're talking about, you know, the actual resolution of approval and the actual plans that you would be submitting as a result of that, I'm wondering really the necessity of including that theoretical access road. I think that was really for review purposes, so that the board could see that if in the future there were going to be a development proposal on the larger property, that it theoretically could work. But I think it would probably be misleading if you filed that as part of a subdivision plan where there is no road like that being proposed. That's just my own thought. Anyhow...
That also makes sense.
Again, that was, that drawing was for the board's edification.
Yeah. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, so that wouldn't be filed with the county, right?
That would be my recommendation, not to file that with the subdivision plan. Would be misleading and confusing.
Correct.
So, all right, well, based on all that, would someone like to make a motion authorizing CPL to prepare draft EAF Parts II and III and a draft determination of environmental significance for the board's consideration at the August 11, 2022 meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Fred moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Julie seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
If I may, would the board also like me to prepare a draft resolution for consideration at that meeting as well?
I was just gonna ask.
Oh, sorry.
The board would like to do that.
I was going to. I thought so. John Starell, you broke it out.
Thanks for asking, Dominic.
Of course.
So, yeah, what does the board think about that?
Yeah, so moved.
Oh, I thought he moved that.
Second.
All right. Felix seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that passes. Okay. All right. And so that, again, just to clarify, that resolution would be for preliminary and final subdivision approval. Very good. All right, I think we're all set.
Okay. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too. All right. Next up is Walmart Fishkill Market Fulfillment Center, sorry, Amendment to Site Development Plan, Board to Review Submission Made by the applicant's representative on June 27, 2022. Welcome, Mr. Talbert. Good to see you.
Good evening.
So, actually, I didn't stay to watch the public hearing for years.
There were no, there were no comments.
Thankfully.
So, that hearing was closed, as I...
Yes, and the hearing was closed.
As I assumed.
Yes.
All right. So, any brief updates that you would like to give on the plan revisions that you submitted?
I think we addressed most of the comments. The letter we received dated July 12 with the comments on that latest submittal was fairly brief, and I had a couple of questions on that. And I'm certainly happy to answer any questions on the resubmittal. But a lot of the comments from the last submittal were more addition of details, some clarifications on things like the bike parking, some of the drainage around the truck dock, things like that. So, I'm happy to answer any questions related to that, if anything was unclear. And I do have a couple of questions on the current letter, if I may.
All right. Well, why don't, John, why don't you go through the engineering memo that you submitted, and then we can...
Okay. I mean, very simply, we, one of the comments was a carryover from the previous comment letter. And I think there was some discussion about this the last time they were here, but essentially, the board needs to weigh in on the acceptability of the reduced number of parking spaces shown. We've looked at it. We believe it's reasonable, but ultimately, you, the board, need to decide whether it's a reasonable reduction. And then, the only other comment we had had to do with the mounting height for the proposed lighting fixtures to conform with the town code. I believe the max height is 20 feet per code, and their detail does depict a pole that exceeds that. So, it would be our recommendation that they change that so they don't have to pursue a variance.
And that was one of my questions. That, number one, that just refers to the pole-mounted lights, correct?
Correct.
Or is that building-mounted also?
Pole-mounted.
Pole-mounted. Okay. So, I have two separate scenarios, and I just want to get clarification so when we make the revision, that we get that correct. So, obviously, new light pole, that complies. We've got a couple of instances where we're calling for a light pole that exists currently, which exceeds 20 feet, is to be relocated. Do we need to, is it okay to relocate those, or do we need to plan on those being new fixtures also that comply with the 20 feet? Does that make sense? Because, so we've got some, we've got a couple of light poles that we're planning to pick up the pole, demolish the base...
And they're currently over 20...
They exist, yes. They exist. So, we're calling for them to be relocated. I just want to make sure when we revise and resubmit, if those need to be new poles, I just want to make sure we address the comment correctly.
Well, so a question, there will be then a combination of new poles and old relocated poles?
That is currently what is shown, yes.
And that they then won't be consistent with each other, in effect?
Correct. And the rest of the lighting that we're not touching on the site will also not match the new...
How many poles are they?
Sir, I'm sorry.
How many poles are there that you're going to relocate?
That are being relocated? I think it's just two. Two to be relocated. And we'll probably end up, we pass these comments on to our lighting consultant. So, we may end up with a couple additional new light poles than what's shown currently on the plan, because the mounting height is lower. But I believe it is two that are being relocated. I can verify that really quickly though.
And how many brand-new ones would there be?
Well, that is somewhat to be determined, just because we're having to rerun the photometric calculations based on the 20-feet mounting height.
Wouldn't it make sense to have all lights within the limit of disturbance area for this project to conform, relocated or new? I mean, the ones that are outside the limit of work, you know, are not, you know, part of this project. But I would think anything within the limits of this project, whether it be relocated or new, we would want it to conform.
That would make sense.
I mean, I don't...
Does that mean we're going to have some 23-foot ones still up there?
Well, the lights outside of the area of this project elsewhere on the site would remain untouched.
Correct. There's no...
Because it's not part of the application.
Correct.
If I understand that right.
Yeah.
So, is what I'm hearing, anything within our project area, if it's new or relocated, well, basically, it just needs to be new, and we need to recalculate.
And that would be my, that would be my opinion.
Yeah, new and conforming to the code regulations.
New and conforming to the 20-foot, okay. Understood.
I mean, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks. I'm just...
No, that makes sense.
Yeah, it makes it a lot simpler. And, you know, we do not normally ask applicants to retrofit existing fixtures in areas that aren't part of the project site, so...
But since they're being moved anyway, that's fine.
Although, if you want to make that proposal yourself...
No, thank you.
Yeah. And then, so again, then you'll have to make sure that the photometric plan conforms to that situation.
And then, the only other question that I had is, since it appears we have addressed the stormwater comments, would it be appropriate now to request the MS4 acceptance form so we can begin our state stormwater review?
Any thoughts on that, John?
Yeah, you can do that at this time.
We can do that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great, great.
Actually, the other thing about lighting is that I couldn't actually find anything in the plans that showed details of the lighting fixtures that would confirm that they're fully shielded and dark sky compliant.
Okay.
Unless you can point to something in the plan set, but I couldn't find it. While you were looking for that, I was just going to go on to mention that, as Mr. Bodendorf had said, the planning board does have to weigh in on the question of parking reductions. And I think we talked about that at the last meeting. I know, for instance, we talked about some other things, too. The board did review the landscaping plan and the bike rack details and the bus stop details, and I think the board was okay with all those things. But we did also go over the parking reduction...
Okay.
...figures. And although it was a pretty cursory analysis, I think the board felt that it was sufficient to be able to make determinations that the reductions proposed would be okay for that site. And again, the planning board does have quite a bit of discretion and leeway in the Planned Shopping Center District in terms of providing waivers for reductions in numbers of parking spaces, especially since there were, there are quite a significant number of parking spaces on both the Walmart and the adjacent Sands Club Development, that I believe the planning board could make a finding in the resolution when we get to that resolution, that parking waivers could be given without the need for doing, you know, set-aside areas on the plan showing future parking reservations. And that's kind of the benefit of the Planned Shopping Center District, that it does allow that finding from the planning board. So, I don't know if any planning board members have any objections to that. Speak up now.
I do not.
Okay.
No objection.
Okay. All right. Did you find anything on the lighting?
I did not see it in the details, so I made a note to be sure that that's...
Okay.
...clearly depicted.
Yeah. So, actually, we, so what I was going to ask the board, I believe we're probably ready to go ahead and authorize our consultants at CPL to put together, you know, basically, what are we talking about, the draft seeker documents, the EAF Parts II and III, and a draft neg deck, since I think that would be appropriate for this development. But we, in order to do that at the next meeting, at the August meeting, we would definitely need the submission in a timely fashion on that lighting.
Certainly.
On the, you know, the revised light pole heights that we were talking about, and on the sheet-holding, and basically the specs of the lighting fixtures.
Okay.
So, any thoughts from the board on authorizing CPL to prepare draft EAF Parts II and III and a draft determination of environmental significance for the August meeting?
I would support that, and I would make the motion, but we can see if anybody else on the board has any thoughts before I make that.
Any thoughts? And I think that motion would probably be contingent, again, on obtaining the lighting details that we're looking for. Anyone have any objections to that?
I would acquiesce.
No, no objections. Okay.
Then my motion would stand.
All right. Anthony moves it. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, that motion passes. Now, we could also talk about whether we'd be ready to authorize Dominic to prepare a draft resolution of approval. It also would be contingent on getting those lighting details. Any thoughts by the board on that?
I would say there's no harm in drafting it. I, you know, if things don't go our way the next meeting, then we don't have to...
Or the applicant's way.
They'll go your way.
Then we don't have to entertain it, but there's no harm in drafting it.
I have a sneaking suspicion they'll go your way.
All right. Well, there you have it. He's on the record.
All right. So, would someone like to make a motion authorizing Dominic Cerdisco to prepare a draft resolution of preliminary and, I would probably think, conditional final approval?
Yeah, I'll go all the way there and make the motion.
Okay, Anthony, finish that.
Can't do that.
Fred, was that a second, or was that just throwing a...
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you, Fred. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any... Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so we're going to have some documents to look at for the next meeting, the August meeting.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, the next item under project reviews is Van Wick News Amendment to Site Development Plan, or to Review Submission Made by the Applicant's Representative on June 29th, 2022, Draft EF Part Two, Draft EF Part Three, and Draft Negative Declaration. And so Robbie is recusing himself from this matter. All right, oh, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Cooper, partner with the law firm is Aaron Steinmetz, here representing the applicant and owner, Toll Brothers, on the Van Wick News application. We are here tonight seeking amendment, amended site plan approval. With me tonight is Greg Otis and Rob Dowd from Toll Brothers, as well as Richard Williams from Inside Engineering. We are asking tonight, Mr. Chairman, that the planning board adopt the secret documents that are before it and were prepared by your consultants. There have been some modifications to the plans since our, since our last meeting, it was outlined in our letter, a reduction in, in the number of bedrooms, or three bedrooms down to 54, from originally from 113. Proposal to expand the pool deck, as well as widen the driveway. In addition to those modifications, the applicant's traffic consultant has submitted the requested materials that CPL requested to complete the traffic review. All of your experts and your consultants have indicated in, in the memos that are before your board, that the issues that, that they have raised have been addressed. With respect to traffic, the CPL's traffic expert concludes that there will be less traffic trips than anticipated in the 2006 negative declaration. The, there'll be acceptable operating conditions at the driveway, and in fact, the expansion of the driveway will improve those conditions additionally. Engineering and planning comments, there are no longer any outstanding, and a negative declaration has been prepared, which I, which I know you know. Pursuant to the secret regulations, since there are no other outstanding items that the board requires, we would request that pursuant to 617.7B3/2, that a determination of significance is, is made.
All right, thank you for that very quick and good update. John, would you like to go through CPL's engineering memo, and I guess after that, to the extent that you can, go through CPL's traffic consultant's memo that was dated June 30th, 2022?
Sure, I, I agree with the, the summary that was just provided. The remaining comments in our July 12th memo really are just a couple housekeeping items, providing health department sign off when they receive it, they finalize their water and wastewater reports, getting us the, or providing structural counts for the retaining wall prior to the site plan being signed. And then we did ask them also to widen the, the turning lanes onto Merit to conform with the, the town highway code. Regarding the, the traffic memo that Jennifer Mishnevich provided dated, well, I printed one out today and it says it's dated July 14th, but I know it was before that.
Yeah, I think the memo itself was June 30th.
Yeah, okay. There, there's a, there's a lot of language in this memo, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but essentially.
Oh, come on.
But essentially, what Jennifer is saying is that everything they provided, she agrees with, and that in fact, based on the changes to the plan, the traffic impacts will actually be less than what was adopted back in 2006. So really, there's nothing else that they need to do with respect to, to traffic, in her opinion.
The other thing I would add, because I just, I just was remiss when I first introduced the team, that Phil Greeley, our traffic consultant, is here tonight, so just for the record, I apologize, Phil, and I jumped right into it, so.
Yeah, well, actually, since we, we never did have a real overview of the traffic comparison study that you were kind enough to submit, do you want to just say a, a few quick words on it? I mean, I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on that because we do have CPL's memo on that analysis, but just for the record, just say a couple of quick words about it.
Good evening, Philip Greeley, Calio's Engineering and Design. Our May 23rd letter summarizes what was done relative to traffic. We collected existing traffic volumes, we did analysis following standard procedures at the access at Bennington, and in terms of what we found with the existing volumes, that the traffic generation was somewhat less than the standard ITE latest 11th edition trip generation for the category. We identified the information in that May 23rd letter, you know, from the ITE data. We ran the analysis at the higher levels to see if there was any difference or any impacts in terms of the operation at the intersection with the additional loading of volume, and we found that it was at acceptable levels of service during peak hours. We did go on to look at the access, there were comments about concerns about the entrance, and we developed a concept plan, which has been expanded onto the site plans to develop a two lane approach exiting the project onto Merritt Boulevard. And, you know, our conclusions are, you know, that the traffic numbers in terms of peak hour generation are less than what was before, you know, in terms of the seeker, and that based on current conditions, it's operating at acceptable levels of service. And I think your consultant had a memo from June 30th that had six comments, but basically, you know, confirming those conditions.
Do you see any issues with widening the, the turning lanes to 13 feet as recommended by?
No.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, one thing I was just going to mention is the planning board, I think at the last meeting, or the last meeting where we discussed this, did review the applicant's responses to public comments that stemmed from the May 12th meeting, I guess. And I believe the planning board was okay for the most part with those, certainly with the exception of the traffic comparison, because we hadn't gotten to that yet. And then also there was the question about the multipliers for the expected population for the amended site plan versus what was approved in 2006. So a lot of that has already been basically covered in the traffic impact assessments. Also, I was going to mention that the planning board did receive emails and attachments on July 13th, 2022 from Laurie Sherman, Wendy Sifu, and Susan Todd with comments about the capacity of the pool and clubhouse, widening the Bennington Drive entrance road with the addition of the turning lanes, requests for a second access road to Merritt Boulevard, and lowering the bedroom count in proposed townhouse units. So these comments are being entered into the project file record, but they are not public hearing comments because the public hearing timeframe had closed quite a while ago. But we definitely, the, the board has seen those, and we definitely do take those into So let me just go to the board and ask if there are any comments or questions from board members on either of CPL's memos, on engineering or traffic impact comparisons, or on the applicant's proposed revisions to the plans. Felix, do you mind if I start with you?
No, I don't, thank you.
So that you, you can, you know, definitely follow up on the multiplier factors that you had brought up before, and on things like the secondary access road, the second access road, or anything else that you had been thinking about?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'm, I know that you did use the multiplier numbers that I had found, and I appreciate that, that you found that. Earlier this week, I reached out to Duchess County Planning. I was trying to find assistance on just the question of, and my basic question to them was, is there any guidance on how many access roads the development should have in relation to the amount of units or residents in that development? So I spoke to Emily Droger, who's our senior planner there, and she told me she would do some research and get back to me. And she wrote me an email yesterday, which I distributed to, to, to my colleagues, and basically here's what she said at the end. She said, "My colleagues all agree that it is the best to provide at least two access points for this type of development for the following reasons: to disperse traffic, to provide more direct access, provide multiple access ways for emergency response vehicles, provide multiple evacuation routes, and provide an alternate route in case one access road is closed due to flooding, other natural disasters, or other reasons." When I look at the Merritt project there, or the Toll Brothers, every other part of that project has two access roads in and out. This is the only one that doesn't. And my main concern is the safety of the residents there. When this is going to be a full build out, you're going to have about close to 700 residents there. If something happens on that one access road and people can't get to them, that could be, that could be something that could be very dangerous, and, you know, something that I feel the safety of the residents there is going to be very important. So I really want to see a conceptual plan of a second access road there.
So, Mr. Lopez, let me, let me address a couple of things. The reason why you don't see two access roads at this site is because it's not viable. Let me remind the board, right, this is an amended site plan. In 2006, your board, sitting as lead agency in a secret review, evaluated all of the issues you brought up, and determined that a single access at this site, because of the, the topography, because, because of the layout, is appropriate for 730 residents, right? At the time, they, they anticipate that there'd be 730 residents using, using the, the site. The, the numbers now show that it, it'd be either the same or lower, but there's nothing in the record, including your experts' review, right, to indicate that there could be a potential significant safety hazard or impact with the single access. So for the board, as a matter of law, for the board to suddenly say, well, even though there's nothing in the record that would support the contention that there's an impact now, that a second access is necessary here, and we're going to ignore the neg deck in 2006, you can talk to council, that's not legally sufficient basis to determine that there's now, now there's a new, new impact. In addition, we've gone through it, right? It's not as if, it's not as if Toll is saying, we're not going to do it, right? We've heard it from, from your board, we've heard it during the public hearing, and we've heard it since then. The, the issue is the topography and their environmental constraints on the site that just don't facilitate a second access point. So it, it's not feasible here. The issue has been looked at, it's not as if people are ignoring it, your board looked at it. In 2006, your board looked at it now, and nobody's saying it's, it's feasible, so that, that's the issue. Don't think that we're saying to, we, we're just not doing it, we, we, you know, we don't care, we've tried, it doesn't work, it's not feasible.
So are we trying to say, Mr. Bodendorf, he can weigh in, there's no possible way to have a second access road here. I know, I know with Merritt, the, the topography is bad, is there any way to get something to 52?
I, I can't say that there's no possible way that there could be a secondary access, but what you just heard is absolutely true. This was approved back in 2006 with a single access, and for, I don't believe the board has the authority to require something like that at this point, since this is an amendment to an approved site plan, but I'll let Mr. Cerdisco elaborate on that.
Yeah, no, that's, that's absolutely correct. In addition to that, you know, the one option would be for the applicant to build the project as originally designed, which yet again, would not have had a second means of access for this area.
That's correct. And I, I was just thinking about it, and I guess one would have to ask oneself, is there anything that different about the amended site plan, change, that is changing the condos to townhomes, basically, that would warrant amending the traffic determinations that were made in the 2006 negative declaration? And our traffic consultant at CPL did not raise this as a concern. Also, you know, we, the fire district weighed in on the overall aspects of safety and access to the site, and while the Longmount Fire District did want to see a connection of the two interior roads that were dead-ended connecting to each other so that the fire department would have better access for turnarounds, right now, I think they, they indicated they basically have to back up to get out of that, the end of that, that area, that dead-end road. And so the applicant did add that interior road connection. But again, everything I can see about the traffic comparison analysis, and in particular, our traffic expert at CPL's analysis of all that didn't indicate anything that would even suggest that the amended site plan would have any impacts of a higher nature, a higher level than that that was analyzed in the 2006 neg deck. So I think we've done our due diligence in pursuing the question of it, but I think at this point, the board really needs to ask that question to ourselves. Is there anything in the amended site plan that would really significantly change the aspects of the original plan in the sense of increasing traffic impacts? And our, our expert at CPL has indicated, no, the impacts would probably be less. So that's my take on it.
Okay, I mean, regardless, I still feel uncomfortable just having one access road, you know.
Can I say something?
Sure.
The question I'm asking myself is, would I feel comfortable moving my family or myself into a unit where there was only one access road? I, I think things, we're talking 16 years, things have changed. We've all seen a lot. Recently, a lot of tragedies where things were not thought of earlier and it cost people their lives. And I'm thinking, I'm looking at your schematic, and I've looked at it 100 times, I even went out there and walked the property. God forbid, one of those units catches on fire, and we did have a fire a couple of years ago out that way. What if a truck broke down? What if there was a problem and that people couldn't get rescued, couldn't get a fire put out?
Hold on.
That's what I ask myself.
And, and, Mr. Perk, I, I understand that, and, and what I can say is, this board in 2006 asked the exact same questions. The, the issues that you have brought up are not different than issues that were, that were facing the board in 2006. And at, at that time, the board determined that this access would be safe, would be appropriate. What I would also say is that, and, and that's not the legal standard, is, is to say, I just feel that there needs to be something, right? The, the, the board has to be guided by empirical data and expert opinion. In this case, the empirical data and the expert opinion in the record, both from your consultant and from the applicant's consultant, demonstrate that this, this design, which has been in operation for many years, is a. has been in operation for many years, is appropriate, works for the site, and because of the, the topography and the other, the other constraints of the site, a second access isn't appropriate. It's just, it's not feasible. But this approach does work. So if the board were to rule, even though your experts say there's no, there's no impact, even though the empirical data demonstrates that there's no impact, if this board were to say, "I don't care, I still think there's an impact, I think you need to speak with your counsel about the appropriateness, the legal appropriateness of that type of decision." Because it's not, it's not premised upon objective factual data.
I disagree. I'm sorry, I disagree with you. The experts 16 years ago, maybe it would be different today. I don't know.
But you have experts now who are looking at it. And your experts aren't saying to you, "There have been changes in circumstances such that this is now unsafe," right? So much so that the question has been asked, your traffic consultant has looked at it. They asked our traffic expert, evaluate, take existing condition counts, look at the site, look at the access, is it appropriate? Both experts have said yes. I understand that people are saying, "We need additional, a second access." But generalized community opposition is not a basis for a board to act. There has to be an empirical or expert support for the position.
Well, I think what Felix, the people Felix went to made an, an opinion, and their opinion was a second access probably would be deemed appropriate.
I don't think, I don't.
That's all I'm saying. I, I don't agree with you.
No, no, I, I know I need to make the record. Now I need to make the record respectfully. Because what, what occurred is, there was some discussion with, with an outside agency that was then distributed again to the board, not to the applicant. And now, and now, and now you're telling the applicant tonight, oh, there's now something else in the record that we've never seen. Now, I don't know what was told to that outside agency about this site, about the project, or about the empirical data in the record from today, from this year, from last year, and from 2006. But I don't believe, and again, you can, you can confer with your counsel, I don't believe that going to some outside agency that may send some email is going to be sufficient basis for this board to determine that there is now a change in circumstance under the SEAC regulations, such that you can just disregard the 2006 negative declaration, disregard your expert's opinion, disregard the draft negative declaration that's before you, disregard the applicant's experts, and say, "We're going to, we're going to vote differently." You know, speak with your counsel. Legally, I don't believe that that is a sufficient basis upon which this board can act.
So I would like to speak with our counsel some more about it, and then just see if you have any further thoughts.
Can I just make one comment, John?
Yeah, go ahead, and then we'll go to Dominic.
Just, just for the record for you, I reached out with a basic question to Emily Dozier. It wasn't for her to tell me what to do, or, you know, to, but the basic question, because I tried to find it everywhere, if, is there any guidance on how many roads should be out there? If, and that was my basic question.
Got it.
Just, please.
Yeah, don't, don't.
And she, she wrote back to me yesterday, "That's why you don't have it." But I will give it to you. But I just, you know, I'm just letting you know, it was a question that I asked Dutchess County Planning, because I called New York State Planning, I didn't get a response, you know. But when I called Emily, she did call me back, and we spoke.
And I understand, I understand it. Again, I need to make, I need to make the record, I need to make the record, I understand it. This is a...
Three-way?
Yeah. One thing, legal things aside, let's just look at some of the engineering. We've talked to this board again about the environmental constraints that prevent a second access. But one thing that we are now proposing is to add a lane at the entrance, which is a divided entrance. So you actually have three lanes of ingress and egress to get into and out of the site. So under your scenario, if a vehicle broke down, an emergency crew could come in, shut down at the division on the divided highway, and use the other two lanes to get in and out. There's still options to move traffic into and out of the site. While it's not two separate roads with three lanes of ingress and egress, and then being a divided entrance, so you actually have two separate throats to get in and out, there is a way to control traffic into and out of the site, should it become blocked. And I just think the board should think about that and consider that, because it is a viable option to move people when you don't have two entrances.
And let me, let me just add something as a retired professional planner. Theoretically, I agree totally with Emily Dozier's advisory statements that it is desirable to have at least two access points to a large development. And as she said, I think, actually saw the email, she said, "There are no specific standards as to like the size of a development where that would apply." And for instance, I live in Holly Ridge, which is served basically by one road, Brockway, and it can be problematic, that's for sure. But, you know, these, these developments were approved as they were a number of years If all of us were on the board at the time of these approvals, dating back, I think both developments were probably, you know, Van Wick News and Holly Ridge and a lot of the other Overlook Point developments, where they're actually now, off of Route 90, must be thousands of new residents since, you know, basically, the early 2000s. Probably we would have done something differently, but it's really, in my opinion, not something that we can go back and say, "Oh, we should have done it a different way." And now because a site plan amendment is being proposed, that really has no impacts beyond what the original approval would have had, to suggest that we now need to add a second access point, isn't practical. And as suggested by the applicant's attorney, may not be legal. So theoretical, you know, from a planner's perspective, yeah, theoretically, a second means of access is always desirable, even if it's only for emergency purposes only. But unless somebody can demonstrate that there is a realistic, feasible way to provide some kind of emergency access, perhaps to some adjacent part of the Toll Brothers' development, I don't know that there's really a whole lot we can do. So I'll turn back to Dominic and ask for your further thoughts on it.
Well, I mean, that actually was an excellent summary, you know, and, and I want to emphasize that, you know, while it would be desirable to have second means of access if you were designing this project now, the reality is, the project is not being designed now. This is an amendment to previously designed and approved project. And the project, as I mentioned earlier, could be built as it was originally designed. The applicant has come forward with a plan that in many ways reduces the impacts from the originally approved design. And as a result of that, you know, there would have to be some empirical substantive reason, more than just opinion, and more than just desire to have a second means of access into this site at this time, because that approval, like, has a certain meaning, and it creates this unique circumstances. So if this, if this was a blank sheet of paper, and this was a new project that was being proposed at this time, then that would be an entirely different set of circumstances. And, and other planning considerations could be taken into account. But here, it might be helpful, I think, to go through the Part II EAF and, and, you know, understand the board's concerns as far as SEAC is concerned, because as the applicant's counsel mentioned, you know, this is being considered not in the abstract, or not, not as a brand-new project, but as a project in comparison to the board's prior negative declaration.
So we do have some draft SEAC documents that, if the board would like to, we can certainly move ahead by looking at them and come up with language that we're comfortable with. So if the board is okay with that, can we ask John Bodendorf to go through the draft EAF Part II?
Yes.
Why don't we start and see where we go?
Okay. So on the, the first potential impact listed in the Part II is impact on land. We checked that, yes, as a potential impact, but all the items listed under Number One, we checked as small impacts, because they're actually reducing the amount of disturbance on the project versus what was proposed in 2006. So if the board agrees with that, we can move on to the next.
Is that how we should be making this no or small impact or moderate impact decision, based on how it is compared to the previous? Or would we, you know?
You're, you're looking at the changes, right? Which, which is...
No, I want to make that clear, because, you know, activity on slopes greater than 15%. Well, there's a fair amount, but compared to the 2006 approval.
You're looking at the differential.
No, I want to make that clear, because I think there's a big distinction there.
Right. It's a good one.
Yeah, and I agree. It's, it's not like we're going back and starting over with all the work that went into the 2006 negative declaration. Okay, anyone have anything they want to add or change in that Number One, impact on land?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so the next one is impact on geological features. We checked that, no. There's really nothing under that that would apply. Impacts on surface water, we checked that, yes. There are wetlands on and around the site. However, again, if you read through all the items listed under Item Number Three, because their disturbance limits are less than what they were in 2006, we listed those all as small potentially, small potential impacts. If we agree, I can move on. Does anybody have any questions about that?
That looks good to me.
No, I agree.
Impact on groundwater, we checked that, yes. But since the proposed use of, of water from the Water District is essentially the same, well, it's, it is a slight increase, actually, but they, there is enough supply, excess supply that the town has to, to serve that additional population.
John, sorry. Just, it was just, the engineer just whispered in my ear, "It's a decrease now because of the..."
Oh, right, because he went down to the two bedrooms. I, I stand corrected.
Right, there was that revised final...
So again, it's, it's less of an impact than what was originally approved in 2006. Impact on flooding, we checked that, no. There is no flood plain here that's being impacted. Impact on air, again, no. If you look at, under the subsections there, there's really nothing that would apply to a project such as this. Impact on plants and animals, yes. But again, compared to the plan that was approved in 2006, the, the impacts are less. So those are all listed as small impacts. Impact on agricultural resources, no. Not for a project like this. Impact on aesthetic resources, again, no. If you read through the subsections there, there's really nothing that's applicable. Impact on historic and archaeological resources, again, no, nothing applicable there. Impact on open space and recreation, we checked that, yes. But again, given that the amount of disturbance and size of the project has decreased since 2006, everything should be considered a, a small impact.
I guess I was wondering, because the one that was marked as small impact was C, proposed action may eliminate open space or recreational resource in an area with few such resources. And I just wasn't sure what that was referring to, really.
Well, you know what? You're right. We probably, we may want to change that, because effectively, it's less of an impact than, than what it was in 2006, so that probably shouldn't have even been checked off.
Yeah, I'd almost, I would probably suggest...
That the whole...
The whole thing be checked, no.
Yeah.
And eliminate that small impact on Part C, unless there was something specific that was being referred to. So is everyone okay with changing 11, impact on open space and recreation, to no impacts?
Yes.
Okay.
Impact on critical environmental areas, that's, that's a no, given the type of project and where it's located. Impact on transportation, we, we checked that, yes. And if you look down to Sub-Item F, Other Impacts, the proposed site development plan amendment may cause traffic volume increases above current levels on the existing road network. Obviously, because of the development, there, there will be some increases in, in traffic. But again, compared to what was proposed in 2006, it is, it is slightly less. So it's small.
Should the items above be checked? No. They're not checked at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could certainly amend that so that it's consistent with the rest of the document.
Yep. And then, of course, when we get to the draft NEG deck, that section on transportation has been expanded, so we can talk about that when we get there.
Impact on energy, that's, that's yes. But again, because the, the number of, of units is going down, there will be less of an impact over what was approved in 2006. Impact on noise, odor, and light, yes. But again, given that the, the size of the project has decreased slightly, they should be viewed as small impacts.
And I think, if I remember correctly on the plans, then the amended lighting plan actually probably has somewhat less impacts than the original approved lighting plan, because we, we are going to basically shielded fixtures. Is that right?
Yes, with this, there's an elimination of a lot of the previously proposed parking lots, which have more commercial lighting associated. This is smaller, more residential in scale.
Yeah.
And we have, uh, impact on human health, that's, that's no. There's nothing here that would apply. Seventeen, consistency with community plans, no, no impact there. Consistency with community character, again, no impact. It's very similar to what's already existing there, and, again, less than what was originally approved. So that's the Part II.
Do any board members have any things that you think should be further changed on that before we get to a motion? before we get to a motion?
No.
I don't. All right, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the environmental assessment form, Parts Two and Three? Actually, Part Three is just administrative form that goes along with Part Two. Further, Van Wick Mews amended site development plan as discussed and revised tonight and authorize the chair to sign these.
So moved.
Anthony moves it. Is there a second? I'm not hearing a second, so I'll second it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions?
No, recuse.
Yes, Ravi abstains.
So what was that?
So we have five in favor, one opposed.
I didn't hear everybody, so.
Just checking on that, five in favor and one opposed? And one abstention. Okay. So we're okay with the Parts Two and Three. Let's move on to the draft determination of non-significance.
Okay, in the interest of time, I'm not going to go over the description of the action or the location. I think we're, we've been talking about this enough. We all know what we're dealing with, so. Reasons for supporting a negative declaration determination. The planning board of the town of Fishkill as lead agency has reviewed the action, identified all relevant areas of environmental concern, considered the plans, the EAF, and all relevant supporting documentation, and has compared the impacts that can be reasonably expected to result from the proposed action with the criteria set forth in Section 617.7, and hereby determines that no significant adverse impacts associated with the proposed action have been identified, and therefore preparation of an environmental impact statement is not required. They make this finding, makes the following findings supporting and substantiating this determination. One, the proposed action will disturb approximately 15.4 acres within the project site. Although 15 acres of the developed site will be impervious, the remaining 35.7, or approximately 70%, will be pervious area consisting of lawn, landscaped area, gravel area, and existing vegetation forested area. Portions of the project site have already been disturbed by the previously completed construction of buildings and the related utilities. A stormwater pollution prevention plan has been submitted for the proposed project. Site development has been situated to maintain existing drainage patterns where possible. The plans include provisions for water quantity and quality control and performance with current stormwater regulations. The stormwater management measures indicated on the plans and incorporated into the project design include both temporary and permanent measures to address water quantity, quality, and erosion and sediment control. Also, areas disturbed for development that do not contain buildings and other impervious areas will be stabilized as lawn and landscaped areas, which further prevent sedimentation. Properly implemented, the proposed measures reduce the likelihood of any adverse impact occurring. Two, while there is no proposed reduction of forested area on the site, notation is included on the sheet VIN dash one that any tree clearing shall only occur between October 15th and March 31st, which will reduce disturbance to the Indiana bat species and their habitat. Three, the proposed action will result in an increase in noise pollution during the construction phase. However, this will be mitigated by the fact that the construction will be temporary. All work will follow requirements of Town zoning code, Chapter 108, Noise, Section Three, on lawful acts, including adhering to working hours between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. After construction, noise generated by the development will be consistent with other similar uses in the project area along Route 52 Merritt Boulevard. Four, though the project could potentially cause traffic volume increases above current levels on the existing road network, the applicant provided a traffic comparison study and recent changes to the proposed bedroom account will actually decrease the number of people living at the site and vehicle trips generated by the amended development plan over what was originally approved. So the proposed traffic will be less than what was originally approved for the project. In addition, the applicant proposes to widen Bennington Drive at the intersection with Merritt Boulevard to provide a northbound designated left turn lane. This will likely reduce delays for northbound vehicles at the intersection and improve the efficiency and safety at the intersection. And five, the proposed action will not result in any impacts on geological features, flooding, or groundwater, air, agricultural, aesthetic, open spaces and recreation, and energy resources, or human health. That's it.
So only item number four mentions the previous approval, and I think the previous approval is a major factor supporting our determination, and I think it needs to be a little bit more prominently featured in the draft than just listed under item four because I think the reason supporting the determination is its impacts in relation to the original approval.
Yeah, so can we come up with some language somewhere?
It may be, we could certainly work that into item number one. I don't know if it really would apply to two or three. Those would be similar regardless.
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Could it be its own item?
Well, what about in the description of the action, which is talking about the entire amended site plan is referencing the original neg deck of 2006 and indicating that the evaluation is the evaluation of the differential. I'm going to steal that. I'm going to go said, I'm going to steal that word. I love that word, but the differential between.
I'm charging for that.
Between.
So you're talking upfront, just put it right up in the description of the action, kind of a standalone.
It's implied there now because it's seeking amended site development plan approval, but to Mr. Brozier's point, to thread the references to the 2006 approval and the negative declaration and carry that forward through the document.
Yeah, I just think the determination would be potentially different if we weren't dealing with something that had been previously approved. So I think it needs to just be a little bit more prominently featured. Otherwise, I don't argue with any of the other content.
Okay, well, let's decide that now. If you're going to vote on it tonight, you know, unless you want me to come up with something to look at.
Yeah, I didn't have, I didn't have a sentence in mind, but.
Well, I think in the description of the action, you could add that the existing site plan was approved in 2006, and pardon me for not having the dates in front of me, but and was also the subject of a seeker negative declaration at that time period. The amended proposal is being considered for potential environmental impacts associated with the changes that are now proposed compared to what was previously approved.
I'd say on the fly, that's really good.
That sounds good to me. Did you get that? Okay.
I could maybe repeat it.
We have videos, we have tapes, we have anything you want.
And would it help if we also amended finding number one, that the proposed action will disturb approximately 15.4 acres, which is less than what was proposed in 2006?
Yes.
And just leave it at that?
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. And so the added wording under description sounds, looks like it should probably just go as a third paragraph under that section, even though it's only kind of a one-sentence thing, but so.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
And again, I don't, I don't know if it really makes sense to alter findings two or three at all because those don't really change over what was approved in 2006.
Agreed.
And number four, do we have a date handy for the traffic comparison study? Do you recall what the, sorry?
May 23rd.
May 23. So add dated May 23, 2022. All right, any further thoughts or changes?
No.
Not hearing any. Do we have a motion to approve the negative declaration for the Van Wick Mews amended site development plan as discussed and revised tonight and authorize the chair to sign it?
So moved.
Anthony moves it. Is there a second? I will second that. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions? We have one abstention, Ravi recused himself. So if I am hearing that correctly, we have a vote of five in favor, one opposed, and one abstention on the neg deck. Okay. All right, well, we got that far and it's not 11 o'clock yet.
I think that's a record for us.
Well.
Yeah, you're right, we're not last tonight, sorry.
Just one more question, which you might have been going to ask, but I was going to ask the board. First, I'll ask our consultants what your opinion is about preparing a draft resolution of at least preliminary approval, if not preliminary and conditional final site development plan approval for the August meeting, now that we've gone through the neg deck. What do you think should be.
Yeah, I mean, based on the outstanding comments that we have, I would certainly support that.
For both preliminary and conditional final?
Correct.
Preliminary and conditional?
I concur, and I would be prepared to make that for the board's consideration as you see fit.
All right, well, would the board be willing to authorize Dominic to prepare a draft resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval for the August meeting?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Anthony moves it. Is there a second?
Jody.
Jody seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And one abstention. So that sounds like six in favor, no opposed, and one abstention. Okay. So that'll be for the August meeting.
Great, thank you very much. See you then. Have a good night.
All right, thank you. So I understand from watching TV a while ago that the agenda item number seven, 415, 453, U.S. Route Nine, Site Development Plan, et cetera, was requested to be deferred by the applicant.
That is correct, and I read the email received by Debbie into the record, so I don't think there's any further action we need to take or any further discussion that we should be having right now.
Can I only ask, what was, again, the reason? Letters to surrounding, okay. I didn't hear that part.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Well, I'll just mention that I had about four pages of notes that I was going to go over for that application, so it looks like we probably wouldn't have had time to do that anyway, but so there's one more item on the agenda, which I'm going to recuse myself for if it goes ahead, but I guess I'll leave it to Anthony to take back over as chair and to determine whether you're going to go ahead and go past 11 o'clock or not with the board.
It's still before 11, so I'd like to at least start the discussion and perhaps find a way to, well, let's talk about, I won't say anything further right now, but yeah, I'd like to at least initiate the item.
Okay, so I am going to recuse myself from the Fishkill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses, as I have done in the past and will continue to do. And I will gather up my papers and I'll pretend my ears are plugged, so I won't hear anything that's going on until I leave the room. And then I can always turn the TV back on at home.
So the final item on the agenda here is Fishkill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses' Site Development Plan, Board to Review Traffic Impact Studies Submitted by the Applicant's Representative on May 25, 2022, and Submission Made by the Applicant's Representative on June 29, 2022. And before I turn it over to Mr. Hire, considering the time and the hour here, I'd like to start this discussion by perhaps starting at the end and maybe working backwards. And I was going to consult Dominic about the potential actions that this board could be taking tonight. If you could speak to what those potential actions could be, my thoughts are, we could authorize the consultants, you and Mr. Bodendorf, to prepare the EAF, draft EAF Part Two and Part Three. Is there anything else that we could consider as well tonight?
That would be the appropriate next step. Seeker certainly encourages making a determination of significance as soon as practicable by the board, and so making that decision, I think, at this point, and the EAF Part Two in particular, will help guide the board as to what the remainder of the process looks like for this particular project.
My thought would be to have it dra, and this is just my thought, and, you know, right now it's just discussion, but to have it drafted so that the board, like you said, could have the EAF Part Two with the boxes checked and decide whether or not they believe those are accurate, whether they need to be changed. I guess the whole idea is to get the board thinking in that direction, and if the board didn't feel like they were in a position to vote on it, we wouldn't necessarily have to act on it at the next meeting, but we would have it in our pocket, we would have the discussion that we'll have tonight and that I'm sure we'll have at our next meeting, and that would at least.
Having a draft of the document in front of the board, I think for.
Would have them thinking in that.
For a project, you know, that has a number of substantive comments that have been raised and the applicant has revised their plans according to, you know, certain concerns, but there's still others that the board may have in light of the extensive public comment. The fact of having a draft Part Two EAF in particular, I think, will help guide the board as to whether or not there is significant environmental impacts that haven't been mitigated for this particular project. Or not.
Okay. At this point, I'll turn to you, Mr. Hire. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that discussion. At this point, I'll turn to you, Mr. Hire. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that discussion. I don't know if that was something you were going to be asking, but that was.
Yeah, I, I think that's something that we would appreciate, because as Mr. Credesco mentioned, it, it kind of now guides where do we need to go from here and what, what really do we need to focus on? And it gives you a chance, as mentioned, to, how did we do as far as mitigating the impacts?
Yeah, I think if the board still has things that they believe are significant impacts, that would at least be. We can go through the form and then we can.
And you could focus on them at that time.
Focus on them that way, I think, yeah. So that would be my, my thought, and we could spend a little bit of time. I know we're right at the, at the top of the hour, but I did want to start with that, and, but. Is there, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to bring to the board's attention through our discussion tonight or anything like that?
I don't think so. At this point, we were just expecting to, you know, comments from the engineer and on the traffic study specifically. We have Mr. Greeley here tonight to speak to that, if there's any questions based off of CPL's review and what we need to go, to do from there.
So, John, would you like to go through the memo, I guess both memos, the traffic study review letter?
Yeah, well, let's, let's start with the traffic study first, because I think, you know, that's been a point of contention for a while now, and now that they've submitted the study and we've had a chance to review it. Again, it was Jennifer Mishnevich of our office who's been doing these kind of reviews for well over 20 years, so she is an expert. What she found in, in her memo dated June 28th is, you know, in general, agreed with the methodology, the, the intersection studied. She, she noted that in, in many instances, they were actually even more conservative than they would have to be for, for the study. And essentially what we've asked is that they provided additional information on, if you look at comment number five, shuttle, there, there was some discussion about shuttle service, but there wasn't really any information in the, in the, in the traffic impact statement about it, so we've asked that the impact study be revised to include data about that. Under number seven accidents, 7B specifically, the impact study provided crash data for each of the intersection studied, but not provide rates for those locations, which could be compared to statewide averages. So we've asked that it be updated to include that information. And then on number eight, there's just some housekeeping items, typos that needed to be cleaned up, but generally, we've agreed with the numbers that they presented. We just want them to provide a little bit more additional information on those certain items so that we can say with certainty that we agree with the whole study.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I could just add to, relative to the accident rates, we, we're in the process of preparing that, but we also did receive some additional accident data, and there were some comments from the public. I believe Mr. Smith and Ms. Antonucci, you know, were specific about some other accident data that they had gotten. So if we could get copies of those also, just to make sure that as we address it, that we make sure we have everything covered. Because we did receive some additional accident data. If you remember, the original study was dated between 2016 and 2019. So since the time of our study, we did receive some additional data, and that would be all part of the accident rate calculations that were requested, so if we could just get whatever other information that the public had to make sure that we're covering everything.
Yeah, I, I gave it over to Debbie.
Great, thank you.
If you can check with her.
Very quickly, relative to the shuttle, we, we will provide that information, but the existing shuttle that runs to Rivercrest is, the idea would be to take, use that and expand it for this purpose, and the vehicle that's, you know, used for the shuttle purposes that stays at Rivercrest, that's where it would be. So there were questions about where would it be located, and, but we'll provide that for you.
Would those updates be provided prior to the next meeting?
Yes, that's the intention is yes. Since we received this, we're already started working on them.
And John, would, would that be something that, you know, our traffic consultant could have an opinion on by, by the next meeting?
Yeah, if, if, if the information is submitted by the appropriate deadline, then that will give us plenty of time to, to look at it.
Okay, because I think, you know, we were talking drafting the EAF.
Yeah, no, I know that would be a critical item, so.
You know, it could be drafted, and if we didn't have that information, we would probably just hold.
Right.
And not do anything with the document until the following meeting.
Correct.
Again, that, that could be part of that, that part of it, okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board members regarding the traffic study?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm not hearing any additional comments, so I think at this time, John, I'll ask you to please review your other comment letter, and that one is dated July 12.
Sure. I, I think the, the, the traffic comments are probably the, the most critical at this point, but in our July 12 memo, we note the need to still obtain Health Department approval. We've asked that, because of the, the changes that they made to the plan, there's, there's some areas where silt fence didn't get moved appropriately, so we've asked them to correct that. We just asked them to confirm in writing that the amount of fill for the proposed mound is, is all going to be sourced from the site. We did get a verbal on that, but we just wanted to see that in writing. And then, again, related to that, that sound barrier mound that they're proposing now, because of the slopes that will be associated with that, we've just asked for them to beef up their erosion control with some more, you know, robust slope stabilization materials, just to really minimize the the potential for sedimentation and runoff from, from that mound. That's, that covers the, the bulk of it. They, based on the plan changes, they did provide a revised whip. It really didn't change much in terms of drainage patterns and such, so they're still in good standing with that.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to go down the line, board members, see if there's any comments, whether, you know, items that came up from the public hearing or any other items they wish to bring to the applicant's attention. I'll, I'll start with Bob.
Well, you know, our walkthrough, I mean, you did see a lot of changes that they're trying to make for the site, the actual construction or, you know, what's going on there objectively. I think the biggest thing I see about, what the people are concerned about is how it's going to be used and some of the ambiguities of the, a couple of the things on the site plan. I guess you've heard, so hopefully maybe you can, you know, answer that. But I think, you know, basically, it's, it's, I guess, the use, but, I mean, like you said, the moving of the field and the grade going down and the amount of material that's going to be moved, and the fact of the actual buildings kind of acting like a barrier, because where you put the field kind of, kind of made sense.
Thank you. Yep, Ravi?
Yeah, I mean, in my opinion, the, still, the critical part is the access to the site. I mean, the roadway road and the industrial ways, so all others have been taken care of, so more mitigated, but. But the access is, is still a single lane road, and the traffic study, traffic thing is really a problem, in my opinion.
Okay, Felix?
Sure. Yeah, just a couple of quick things. I mean, every time the public seems to come up something interesting, at least, to look at. But first, the pavilions, can you, again, just elaborate on the pavilions, because I know they've brought it up a few times? What are they used for? Is that lighting? Is that, you know, just give us some brief on the, on the pavilions?
Sure. So the pavilions will be used for, as we've mentioned, both meditation and passive recreation. They're the ones to the north. Our submittals have repeated the point that the lighting has been removed from ones to the north. Our submittal, get my dates right, in May for the June public hearing, laid out the sizes and the number of people that would be allowed maximum at a pavilion, which was 25. The pavilions to the west, my directions correct? Pavilions to the west, those, because they are behind two tree lines plus this, the, the visual sound barrier that we're installing, those would have lights in them for, for use, and, and again, for, to go out for meditation, for passive recreation. Probably, we would have like a gas grill, half, one or two, or maybe all of them. I don't know, that hasn't been decided yet. But we could go out, sit, enjoy creation, enjoy a meal. That's the purpose.
When you say there's going to be lighting, is it going to be lit in the evenings at night?
So there will be, the way we typically do the pavilions, at least at our other sites, is there are small exterior lights and sometimes a ceiling fan associated with that underneath the eaves of it, so the lighting isn't outside of the structure. It is an open-sided structure, so you will be able, but the, the peak of it and the lighting up at the top blocks that, other than what you see from the sides.
I know when we walked, we, we did the site visit, we did walk around the outside of the, where the cap is. Would you like to just describe that a little bit for the public, because the public started talking about it a little bit, and I'm not sure they get a feel for what it really is exactly, so they're concerned about people walking around and maybe walking on the cap. Some people thinking that we might start playing games on there, so can you just elaborate on that?
Yeah, so that, that soil cap area is a very protected area. We're very limited in what we are able to do with it, with, as has been mentioned in our submittals and also by members of the public tonight, we can't do any construction on that without DEC approval, which is why DEC was notified back in February that we had submitted to get their comments back. So our plans for that is to leave it as you see it today. Other than the walking paths that will go around and maybe have a cut across, as the site plan shows, other than that, the plan is to leave it. We don't mow that regularly, and the grass right now is waist-high, at least, out there. And the idea is to keep that as a natural spot. We're not planning on building anything there. We've moved everything off of that.
And last couple, couple things, I know, a couple of people brought up an acoustic study. I don't even know how that would work. John, do you know anything about acoustic studies?
I, I mean, personally, I, I've never, I, I've been involved with, with some noise studies in the past, but I'm not sure how you would set the parameters for a noise study for something like this. I don't know, Dominic, if, if you might want to weigh in on this as well, but to me, I don't, I, I'm not sure how you would simulate what the noise is going to be once this is all constructed, and, and how you might simulate buffers and walls and things like that. I, I just, we would have to probably, I, I, there may be somebody within our company who is more of an expert in, in these types of things that I could reach out to, to, to get opinions from, but short of that, that, you know, that might be something that we may even need to look to an outside consultant for advice on, but, you know, just from a, you know, my experience, it's, it's not something that for similar type developments, I've, I've ever seen something done like that in the past, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't know the right parameters to, to set for that.
You know, a noise study, if I may elaborate on that a bit, you know, is, is most typically seen in a situation where you have perhaps like an industrial use, like a warehouse, that also is maybe close to residences. And you want to evaluate the impact of like what the potential noise might be, like for, for instance, from like rooftop units, like rooftop HVAC units, and that will be running all the time, and what that would do to the noise levels, you know, to a potential receptor, receptor being nearby residents. And that's fairly standard, because that, you, you know, like if you know what kind of air conditioning unit is going to be placed on top of the building, you know where it's going to be, at what height, and at what distance to nearby residents, it's, there's software that calculates what that impact is going to be, what those noise levels are going to be. The other key component there is, is that as part of that study, they also go out and they look at the existing background noise levels that exist in that area now, so that you can look at, well, once again, the differential between the two. This situation's a bit different, because we have a variety of uses, and they're also kind of, they're transient uses. It's not like there's an air conditioning unit that's near residences that is humming all the time. Back at the last meeting, I had suggested that there's possibility, if the board thinks it's appropriate, of conducting rather a post-construction noise survey, and the reason that I suggested that is because it's difficult to quantify, you know, it's, it's, one of the comments that a member of the public made tonight, you know, was about the fact that there was metal bats that are used, and yeah, sure, a metal baseball bat has a particular thwack to it that a wooden bat doesn't have, but how do you, like, in a, in a pre-construction survey, how do you quantify that, you know, is it even possible to provide any kind of substantive analysis of what that would be? But you can quantify it post-construction, because what, the way that that would work is, is that actually as part of the approval, like there would be a ambient noise levels taken under a variety of different circumstances out there now, so you would establish a baseline, and then after the facility was completely up and running and during normal conditions, you would then go out and redo that test and see whether or not there is a significant rise in noise levels, such that it would be substantive and potentially bothersome to, to residences. That's why I suggested that there, because it's actually something that you can't really get your arms around now, because it's not something that's easily measured.
But what can we do if it's a post?
If it, if it's post, what, what you do is, as part of that noise survey condition, is actually require them to come back and report to the board, and the board can also look at potential additional mitigation measures at that time.
So we can put in a plan that they would have to come back?
Correct.
Okay, so I think that would solve a lot of the issues that people were saying. I heard the one guy talking about a truck backing up, that beep, beep, beep. But I have that in my driveway every time somebody backs up, you know, that oil tank and, or anybody else, so.
Yeah. I, I was offering it in an attempt to address the concern in, in a way that would be practical and meaningful, you know, and also provide an opportunity to address concerns when they actually exist.
No, okay, I agree, because when they suggested that, I was trying to figure out how we would actually measure it. You know, I don't know how to measure it if there's nobody out there.
Right.
Actually measure.
It would be fairly theoretical at this point.
Okay. All right. And, and that's what I have for right now.
Fred?
Yeah, again, I'm, I'm just listening to the public of what, what they're saying, and some of them are concerned about the.
Just the microphone. Just the microphone, Fred.
And some of them were concerned about the DEC and what's going on, and I don't know if they've ever really got an explanation that you sort of talked to us about, that they come in and inspected every, whatever it was you told me, you know?
Yeah.
And I don't know if you should put that in, and so the public really knows exactly what your obligation is to the DEC regarding that property. All right? And the other thing which we never talked about is when we did walk the property, I mean, it's really bare, you know, it really is. I didn't know if you were going to be putting, you indicated you were going to be putting out some ground cover on the walkway itself, which was wood chips, I believe you said?
Correct.
And I don't think you've ever told the public that, and I don't know if you ever told them that you might be doing some other plantings as, you know, I know, I would love to see that if I was walking that whole area.
Sure.
So again, that's just something more to give the public to satisfy those concerns that they have.
Okay.
I think where the ballpark is going to be that's going to cut down on the noise, I believe you guys are playing softball, so they're not going to have the same bang off that bat as we do in hardball, you know, so I just, and I agree, I'd love to see probably a post-survey of the sound, and that'll solve a lot of the problems, or correct any problems that we have missed.
Thank you. We'll make those points clear in our next response in the middle.
Jody?
First, first, I want to say thank you for inviting us for the walkthrough. The property was very beautiful, I can see the potential there, and I also want to say that you guys were very hospitable, and it appears to me that you are taking to heart what the public is saying. You relocated the fields, actually overlaid two of them as far away as you can feasibly get from the property lines. Those changes that you made are noted, and I'm sure they're appreciated. With that being said, it is a park, and it is a recreation area, therefore, it is not going to be always quiet. Any park has activity, whether it's younger people playing, or older people playing, or even old people, they have senior baseball leagues, they make noise. We just have to figure out how can we mitigate, mediate that noise and still keep the beauty of the property and keep the neighbors happy, and with the lighting, I commend you because I think you're really trying to be neighborly, and I'm sure everyone in those communities appreciates it by what you're doing. So again, like everybody said, maybe afterwards, we could, once everything is done, have a noise study done, and then you can continue to take appropriate action. But when we were there, you had said there were going to be, first of all, the buildings would be made whole, and there would be a mound of dirt and additional trees, and I think that will help. When I was there, I could not hardly see the roof of one house, a piece of a roof of a house. So with all the trees, I know in the winter, the trees and leaves won't be there, but I couldn't see it. So I'm not sure how lighting or anything in the summer would get there, but I do understand where it's a concern, so.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. And there were a few items that were brought up tonight that I took note of that I'd like you to look at as well. I know the lighting that mentioned the 20-foot high poles, I know you provided a foot candle plan, but would it be possible to mitigate that further? You know, I'd like that to be looked at. Landscaping was brought up quite a bit, higher plantings, plantings on the berm, plantings that potentially grow faster. I know you have the landscaping plan, but I'd like that to be considered in a future submittal. Concerns about using the fields before the walls, or the walls of the buildings are constructed, so I think that ties it to phasing, I'd like to see some more fleshed out on the phasing. Time of construction, anticipated times of construction, perhaps even have that spelled out on the plan. There was questions about the walking trail area and what that could potentially be used for in the future. Would it possibly, could it possibly be put in writing that that area would not be used for soccer in the future or any other sports? I mean, you have the trail there, you have the basketball courts and the soccer and the softball field in that part of the site, but would it be possible to perhaps put something in writing that says, you know, only certain activities, you know, you mentioned the walking trail, the meditation area, could that potentially be spelled out so that, you know, the public doesn't have to worry about a softball game breaking out on the cap over there? You know, I think that's the direction it needs to be, I think the more language that could be put in there, at least there's something that would be on the record for the town in case something did come up in the future. So I think those are the kinds of steps that would be, you know, what we would like to see. So those are some of the things I had, and I guess at this point, I'm going to go back to what I started the agenda item with, which was the thoughts of whether this board would entertain a motion to allow our consultants or authorize our consultants to prepare a draft EAF Part II and Part III, and a draft, I guess, declaration of significance or determination of significance, and it would be something that if the board didn't feel comfortable entertaining at the next meeting, at least they would have the EAF Part II and Part III to kind of guide the items that are part of our seeker review, and get everybody thinking about where, what items need to be considered, so you could look at that and say, all right, is further mitigation needed on this or not? So that would be a motion that I would be, I'd like to see what the board's thoughts are on whether or not they would support that motion tonight.
I'd just like to ask our counsel if he thinks that preparing the neg tech just.
Well, I wouldn't call it, I wouldn't call it.
I apologize, preparing a determination of significance is what we should be doing at this stage since we just closed the public hearing, I don't know, you tell me.
Well, you know, a couple of thoughts there, I mean, not only you did close the public hearing, but you did leave it open for additional written comments, and so, you know, I would advise the applicant to be mindful of what additional written comments come in. The applicant's actually been very good at responding to comments in their responsive summaries as part of their submission, and as you pointed out, Mr. Brozier, that you're expecting them to respond to the substantive comments that came up tonight in their next submission, but that should also include anything that's done in writing as well. My suggestion for going through the Part II EAF is actually to help guide you as to whether or not you're heading towards a negative declaration or a positive declaration. Those are the two options for a determination of significance, and they're quite different, you know, because one is a conclusion of the environmental review, and the other one is really, in essence, a beginning of the environmental review, if you will, because with a positive declaration, you go through the process of having a draft environmental impact statement prepared. And the key issue there is evaluating not only the impacts in the Part II and quantifying them, but also identifying whether or not the applicant has proposed mitigation measures that are practicable. And so that, I think, for a project of this complexity, it will, you know, take up some time to go through, I think, the Part II EAF. If it's helpful to the board, you know, and we've got time, I don't want to speak for John, but preparing a draft negative declaration, like, for review purposes, you know, might be helpful to see what it looks like.
Perhaps we would stop at the EAF Part II and Part III drafting for tonight and leave the determination of significance for the next meeting, because I believe going through the EAF Part II will take a substantial amount of time at the next meeting, and I think there's going to be a lot to chew on, and I think just taking that step will get the board focused on the items that are part of the seeker review, because there's been a ton of comments, but a lot of comments that are not necessarily part of seeker, and I think it's important to focus on what is in our purview, if I'm saying that correctly.
That's correct, that's correct.
So maybe that would be a better approach, at least to, you know, keep the ball moving, but at least also have the board thinking along those lines and, you know, and just taking that step.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, that's what I was thinking, because I figured that we should probably look at that first before we look at where, which way we're going on the determination of significance, so.
I mean, otherwise, it would be kind of like Monty Hall, right, you know, and you have door number one and door number two, and you didn't know exactly what you're going to get.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other thoughts from the board members as to the approach we would take tonight? Sounds like EAF Part, draft EAF Part II and Part III would be the motion that I would throw out to the board.
He can make it two motions or one?
No, one motion.
It would be one motion, and I'll throw it out there now. Would the board entertain a motion to authorize our consultants to prepare a draft EAF Part II and a draft EAF Part III for Fishville Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses Site Development Plan?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And we have John abstaining, so six, zero is the vote. I think that would be, Dominic, I think that's probably as far as we would go tonight, I don't know that there's anything else that we would need to discuss, or Debbie's, or anything else. I know we got some handouts tonight, there was one with the accident reports, the traffic consultant.
I agree with you.
Yeah, and their traffic consultant would like that as well.
I agree with you.
Okay. All right. I believe that's it for this evening, unless there's anything else at this hour.
No, I just want to say thank you for being willing to stay a little bit longer than 11 to this, and we'll make sure we have a very comprehensive response in our next submittal for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Acting Chair, I'd like to make a motion. Adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Second?
I second.
Felix seconded.
Third.
All those in favor.
He wants to stay.
I'll vote with our feet, I guess.
I want to stay.
You want to stay, but I want to stay till tomorrow, you only got another, less than 13 minutes.
Yep.
Thank you.